There's nothing to pour out. So we will begin the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 24th. I'm sorry we were a few minutes late. It took us a little bit longer, but it made more sense for us to finish what we were doing rather than to have to go back. So may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Skillman?
Here.
Councilmember Delloso?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Okay. With that, is there anybody wanting to speak on the pledge allegiance? Yes, George?
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the audience and the folks at home tonight, my name is George Berich, the former city councilman here in Kattati, and I want to thank the mayor for opening this issue up because I tried to speak on this matter last year, and I was refused access at this time when we have members of the audience here that might have some interest in what I'm about to say. The pledge of allegiance has always been a very important part of starting these proceedings, has some historical effect, and also has some legal effect as well. The one part of the pledge of allegiance I want you to take heed in is that part that says, "One nation under God." And it was something I wanted to speak of last year, but I think it's relevant for the citizens of the town and the taxpayers and our guests here tonight to find out, you know, what that means to the council, "one nation under God," and maybe ask the council whether you believe in God or not. And maybe you can show the audience by a raise of hands whether you believe in God. If you can do that now, please, just raise your hand if you do. Let the record reflect that none of the city council members have risen their hands, which means that each night when you say the pledge of allegiance and you say "one nation under God," evidently you don't believe it, or you're talking out of both sides of your mouth, or you're being intellectually dishonest, or you're playing politics. You know, it's one of the other or the other. And the fact is, is that let's look back to see what some other members of the council have done in years past when they didn't want to say the pledge of allegiance. Bob Coleman was on the council in 2009, and what Bob Coleman would do, he would stand up there and he would look at the flag, and he would put his hands behind his back, and he wouldn't say a word. Now, that's one way to do it. If you don't recognize the flag, you don't want to pledge any allegiance to the nation, and you don't think it's "one nation under God," you can sit there in silence. I would recommend you to do something else, is that you recuse yourself. That's the intellectually honest thing to do, is that if you don't believe in God and don't believe in the pledge in its entirety, if you want to pick and choose and cherry-pick the pledge, best thing to do is recuse yourself, step outside, show the public that you're intellectually honest, and then come back. I think that's something that I could respect, but I think this game that you keep playing, this farce about saying "one nation under God," I think is something that the public needs to kind of take notice of, because it seems to be very typical of how you run city government all along. You break the law, you say one thing, you do another, you make promises, you pass ethics codes for the council, you don't enforce them. So take that into consideration, and thank you for showing the audience that you didn't raise your hand tonight.
So George, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, "one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And we had a very important person within our community pass this week, and so I would like to ask you all to bow your heads for a moment of silence for Prue Draper.
May I ask you on this matter?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for obeying the law and allowing me to speak. I'd like to respectfully say, what in the hell is going on? You're holding a moment of silence for all Kattati citizens who pass in this town? What is your criteria here for having, holding a moment of silence? Do you have to be a Democrat or a Republican, or do you have, what's the criteria? Is this the new normal, that you're going to start holding moments of silence for every citizen in town who passes away? What's really going on here is this is playing politics. Mrs. Draper was very influential in getting each and every one of you either appointed to the city council, like the gentleman here on the council. They weren't elected originally, they were appointed, because they got the blessing of Prue Draper, because she wanted her agenda filled here in town, and these gentlemen were just the guys that can do it. Mrs. Draper was also a financial contributor to some of the campaigns here on the city council, and she also held coffees and get-togethers to make sure that we had five like-minded socialist Democrats on the city council who would do everything in their power to destroy and keep any independents and conservatives and Republicans off the city council. And you did that work for her. That's fine. But the fact is, where do we go from here? What are we going to see next? Are you going to put together a memorial with a plaque of Prue Draper downtown at Memorial Park next to the memorial for Bob Coleman? Is that something you're going to do? See, Mr. Landman seems to like that idea. Now, we're going to start having monuments of people who are part of the socialist elite here in Kattati, and I think, you know, the public needs to stand up and take notice what's really going on here. I think it's very, very disingenuous to be giving special treatment to certain citizens in town and then not giving any kind of acknowledgement, no proclamations or anything, to anybody else of a dissenting or different viewpoint. It smacks of everything that's wrong in city government, that you have one rule and one policy, and you maintain it, and you practice it, or you don't. And this type of favoritism is something that's not Kattati. She would not want to be singled out, knowing that other people in town are not giving a moment of silence, and I think you need to take heed of this and think twice before you play favorites like this.
Thank you very much for your comments. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes and the notice of waiving, of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor? I, and Mayor, I would abstain just since I was absent. I did watch the video, but since I wasn't here, I would abstain. So we have four yes and one abstention. Now, we will move on to the announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Kattati Rounert Park Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. The city offers a variety of recreational programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatacy.org. And lastly, just outside on the table, there is a community meeting being sponsored over in Rounert Park Wednesday, January 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30 to get community thoughts about the new health action chapter. So I just want to make sure, and there are flyers outside. So with that, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Seeing none, then we will have a final agenda, and we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take actions on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the city council policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I do have some speaker cards. I believe it is Noah Moore.
Good evening. Public speaking isn't really one of my strong suits, and I'm just kind of in shock from the vitriol and ignorance and just disrespect for somebody who passed away from Mr. Berich there. It's astounding that you have to deal with this every single time. I think you have some mental health issues and you should seek help. Onto what I wanted to talk about. My neighbor has a tree that several limbs have fallen down onto my property. I went and spoke to her about it. When I was chopping up one of the limbs, I noticed that it had little black bulbs, and it has sudden oak death. And I went to speak to her. She doesn't have money to take care of it. Her and I are going to work something out, and I've talked to the other people in our community, but, you know, just in our little neighborhood. But she has three trees of substantial size, 40 feet plus, you know. I have eight trees on my property that are substantial size, and within the whole hillside and where I live, I mean, there has to be 50 or 60 trees. It's right down here on El Rancho. And oak trees are a predominant feature in Kattati in this area. So I just want to let you guys know, I'm not sure if you have a program in place to deal with that or to assist people taking down trees, but it's right here, right downtown. And, you know, it's fairly contagious. There's not a whole bunch you can do to deal with it besides chop, infect the tree down. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you. Good night. Good luck.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a question for you, Mary Ann. Is it citizens' business you want to speak about, or did you want to speak specifically on the rate increase item?
I just submitted a written comment about that, and I didn't really want to speak about it unless you had any questions. But what I wondered if I could speak about now was that I live in the Sierra Mobile Home Park, and as you enter the park, it's, you enter on a bridge, and then just to the west of that bridge, there's a pole. And anyway, the water from the creek is eroding the area of the bank. It's on the northern side of the bank, and it's eroding the bank, and you can see almost to the point where that pole is, you know, secured in the ground. You see bare rocks way down there. And the last time I saw the city crew come out to take out some dead branches, I told them about it and thought maybe they already knew about it, but they said it was Comcast's and they would tell them. And I'm just wondering if maybe you are aware of it already, but that pole seems to be a stabilizing pole that would connect, it has wires across to the other side of Sierra Avenue. And if it should fall, it could fall on West Sierra Road, I guess. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi. I'm Lillian Payne Vaughn from 22 Terrace Drive in Kattati in Countryside Mobile Home Park. I'd like to get back to the issue of trees. The manager of our park is cutting down trees without permits, but he won't cut down trees that I've asked him to cut down three years ago that is his responsibility and the park's responsibility. I saw them this morning, the tree cutter and the manager in my carport, talking about the tree to be cut down, and the reason he is talking about it is because I've sent him a demand letter regarding the liability and the cost. He has not answered that, but he has managed to get a tree cutter out there. I have repeatedly asked him to set an appointment and notify me this about the tree cutting, but he doesn't seem very, he just won't do it. Now, he's supposed to come down City Hall and get a permit. He did not get a permit for the tree across the street. We're playing a game here with people in power, and I'm really, really tired of being a victim. And I wish there was something that could be done about the tree situation throughout the city of Kattati. I was on the park and recreation when we instituted this tree ordinance, and some of it is being obeyed and some of it is not. And I think that you should go back and talk with Public Works and see what can be done to make this tree ordinance more effective. Also, I would like to thank you for getting the mirror put back up at the bus stop. I don't know whether it was there all the time, and I'm blind and I couldn't see it, but I saw it the other day, and I appreciate having that mirror out there. So this is only the one thing I have to say today, but I would like to talk about garbage later. Thank you.
Thank you, Lillian.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that we're seeing here are citizens that are coming forward and laying out their problems and their concerns to the city council because they're not getting support from the city staff. And I think it's very indicative of the fact that, for a long time, people's complaints and concerns have fallen on deaf ears with city staff. And the fact that they have to come here oftentimes begs the question, what's going on? These are simple matters that staff can take care of. You've directed staff a few times to help these citizens, and maybe you've got to look into it a little farther, whether your work is being done. But Mayor, I would like to thank you. It sounds like we're off to a good start with some new leadership this year. I'm hoping that we can, it sounds like we are back on track to obeying law and order, trying to follow the Brown Act. I have to say, it's very refreshing. I wish you well going forward and so forth. I would like to take a quick walk down memory lane to your last term as mayor. I think over the years, you have learned a lot, and hopefully, you're still learning, because I want to remind you, when you were mayor the first time during your term, I stood up and requested to speak on closed, I mean, consent items many, many times, and you refused to let me speak on consent items for the entire term of being on a mayor. City staff and city attorney did not weigh in on this, as I remember, but it was a blatant act, violation of the Brown Act. We've come to learn that the city attorney has given the city council strict instructions that you must open up each and every item on the agenda for public comment in accordance with the Brown Act. And I'm hoping that will continue going forward, and good luck tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak?
First of all, back in the day when we were a quaint, small town, it used to be pretty customary, you know, circumstance of a loss as recent as this, and that is a factor, the fact that somebody passed away yesterday. But as soon as possible, the person's name would go on the marquee in the downtown, their date of birth, their date of passing, just essentially in memoriam. I've asked in the past that you, as policymakers, create a policy for memorials on public areas because there are a number, and they're somewhat scattered. Some are under a tree, some are in a rose garden, some are in the middle of a park, some are at the foot of a stage, and some of those are in keeping and make sense, and some of them, I go, who put this in? When did it happen? There are also, of course, some benches. The Draper's son has a memorial bench in front of the dress shop, for lack of a better description of it, and that too. There should be policies on monitoring what goes on in the city. So I would suggest in the future agenda that you put that on. I've come to you a number of times, and I'm a little concerned with the roadway, Old Redwood Highway, which you recently paid a substantial amount to have a new magic covering. Apparently, it doesn't hold up too well in the rain, because if you go down Old Redwood, it's, there are spots that are now what we call potholes, and it was put in less than three months ago. I hear repeatedly that the work is still in progress and nothing is quite done yet, so why don't I be patient? Well, that's been the case for 30 years. So I would hope that if you're going to have a $3 million project, that there's a finish date and it's finished. I'm very concerned that you're going to put in a lit crosswalk between Arches and what used to be the mailbox or message center by the cabaret. Very, very few people ever cross there or even walk on those streets. So I would kind of look at what is pedestrian traffic rather than just, oh, we saw it on the map, and that looks like a nice spot. I would say there's probably more of a need at the next block up where, unfortunately, the intersection is dark, and people do go to the shopping areas and the pizza place, and some people do walk from their homes. Very few people walk from the fire department or the temple and cross the street to Arches Glass in that area. So I guess you might want to draw people to the park, but you have another crosswalk that has a signal, which makes a lot more sense for people crossing. So I'm hoping that isn't where you choose to put the only lit crosswalk on Old Redwood Highway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I will close citizens' business. Does anybody have any comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close that. Direction on future agenda items?
We have some questions.
You have some questions? Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
Staff might follow up, but a couple of things came up. Let's see if I can get back. We had a lot of speakers tonight. The gentleman who left but was pointing out the concern about sudden oak death potentially in the neighborhood of El Rancho, I was wondering if staff, if we were able to get the name, if you could get back in contact. I don't know if there's any testing or what help might be available at a county-wide level or perhaps statewide level, but I would appreciate just a contact to see, because that's certainly a concern. Given the amount of trees I've lost on my property, I have some sensitivity to that lately, so I wish they were oaks, but nevertheless, it's just the same problem. As far as the entrance bridge and the Comcast bridge, I wonder if we could make sure that Comcast is aware that there's potentially part of the entrance bridge is eroding in one corner. This was described to us by Mary Ann Coughlin, is just west of the bridge as you enter, and workers evidently mentioned it's a Comcast bridge. I just want to make sure that gets back to them. That probably was in great shape, but with the recent rains we've had, I wouldn't be surprised if it did get washed out a little bit. So that would be a good thing to make sure they get a chance to check on. Be a lot less, more cost-effective to wait until it's to fall apart, so. And lastly, I know we've looked into this before, but I think just one more time for the heck it, if we could make sure that when it comes to cutting trees with or without a permit, that appropriate measure of being followed at Terrace. I know, I think we went up and checked, but if there's been a recent spate of cutting since the floods, which is possible, one more quick check would probably be a worthwhile thing, just so we can be sure for everybody's peace of mind that the appropriate laws are being followed. And oh, yeah, and I like the new description, magic covering. I might use that one for a while for this new way of covering, but I wonder, I'd like to hear a report back if we have potholes and how that's working out, if that's the expected behavior when we can do about it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else? Damian, are those all things that you'll get back to us on then? Or are there any that you can answer us right now?
So on the, on the sudden oak death, we can certainly contact the, I think it's the Ad Commission and some of the other county entities that might be monitoring sudden oak death and see if there's any programs in place. And I believe we have the speakers' names, so we can try to contact them if we find some useful.
Yes, I believe it was Noah Moore.
Yeah. And I'll circle back with Public Works and check on that utility there at, at Kattati Creek by West Sierra. And then we will, we will check the tree permit to make sure that it's been appropriately followed, the Mobile Home Park. And we are, with regard to the road project, we are, because of the cold rainy weather, the contractors had to suspend work temporarily, and then we'll be back out there once the weather improves a little bit. And we are working with them to, to repair areas that deteriorated, so. But I'll have more information in a future meeting on that.
Okay, yeah. I know this, this year has been a really bad year for trees in, in general. I know some of us have lost big portions of trees and are having to deal with, with trees. I think, you know, the combination of, of the storms and then the drought that we've had for so long has really done a number on, on quite a lot of trees. So I think there'll be a lot of folks dealing with tree issues for a little bit to come until that gets squared away. So with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Did you have something to add there?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So in the packet is, in the packet is, you have several items, and in accordance with Government Code Section 49, I'm sorry, 54953, which is a section of the Brown Act, Item 9B includes the recommendation to approve a compensation plan for unrepresented and confidential employees, which includes the police chief, public works director, city engineer, director of community development, director of administrative services, building official, public superintendent, and the police services aide. And the plan is intended to consolidate and provide uniformity of benefits currently held in individual plans. And a summary of the changes include equity adjustments intended to bring the positions to the small-city market median of total comp over the phase and period of one year, which is made up of defined salary adjustments, a shift to a deferred comp matching program for Tier 2 and Tier 3 employees, and increased vacation accrual for higher years of service for Tier 2 and Tier 3 employees. And then other miscellaneous provisions of the plan include 2.5% COLA in line with other bargaining groups for a period, for a five-year period, elimination of deferred comp and post for the chief, as well as a change, an increased change in the purse contribution, a modification of longevity pay for the purposes of retention, and then the option to participate in a high deductible health insurance plan, including a defined employee share and a defined annual city contribution to health savings account, again, intended to bring down the cities and the employees' overall health premium costs. The option to opt out of the city-provided health insurance with a defined cash and lieu benefit, again, intended to lower the city's lieu benefit, again, intended to lower the city's healthcare premiums. And it also finally redefines what a part-time employee is in terms of eligibility for benefits. It changes it from, in some of the, in the other labor groups, a regular schedule of twenty hours per week, and it raises it to thirty hours per week to be defined as a full-time employee. So that was all I had to add for the consent.
Okay. All right. With that, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve items A through C on the consent calendar.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is 5-0 for items A, B, and C.
Madam Mayor, if I may back up just a moment, can I address an item on future agenda items?
Certainly.
Thank you. I would like to see us look at a memorial policy for the city sometime down the road, and maybe potentially even having the, oh, I don't know, the Pro Draper City Hall or something like that. So I think that would be something that would be worthy of a discussion as far as a policy in place.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. So we will move on to public hearings. The first item is interim urgency ordinance extension on cultivation of non-medical marijuana. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as everyone, I'm sure in the room recalls, on November 8th of 2016, the voters approved Proposition 64, which was the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which legalizes the recreational non-medical use of marijuana in California for individuals 21 years of age or older. And as part of this new law, it authorizes the personal cultivation of up to six marijuana plants within a private residence or upon the grounds of that residence for non-medical purposes. In addition, the city, the city, any city in the state, can enact reasonable regulations for the cultivation of non-medical marijuana that occurs inside a residence or accessory structure and can prohibit outdoor cultivation outright if it so wishes. And on December 13th, 2016, the city adopted an urgency interim ordinance for the purposes of basically freezing cultivation activities until the community has had a chance to discuss it and decide what type of uses the city and the community want to allow. And it avoids the potential issue of grandfathering, where uses may begin, you know, prior to the community discussion occurring, and allows the more streamlined regulation of it when and if the city decides to allow cultivation in some areas or all areas of the city. And that initial action that the council took is a forty-five-day interim ordinance. And so in order to extend that, the ordinance in the packet tonight, there's two different ordinances. One is for the regulation of indoor growing of non-medical marijuana. The other one is for the temporary ban of outdoor cultivation, and it's primarily to, like I said, allow the community to have an opportunity to discuss it and fully vet all the issues around the cultivation of marijuana in the city. And it also, in the interim, would avoid some of the nuisance issues that can occur with cultivation, particularly in residential zoned areas of the city, and associated crime and so forth. So the action, if the council were to move forward on these two ordinances tonight, we'd need a forfeit approval, and it would be effective for ten months and fifteen days, at which time it could be extended again, but it's expected by that point in time, the city would have had a full community discussion around it, and something else more permanent would be in place that would supersede it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. So this is a procedural. Is it, can we make one motion for both ordinances? First question.
For the record, I would make two separate motions.
Two separate motions, okay. And is the plan for, I know we haven't heard of any kind of timing of public meetings, but are we looking like sort of spring, summer, or is there any idea? And I would really encourage a weeknight meeting and a weekend day meeting. I think we should have two, you know, public workshops, whatever we want to call them, that, you know, last whatever length of time, but I'd strongly encourage that, to try to catch as many people as we can.
Okay, yeah, we have, right now, we are currently, at the last meeting, as part of this whole interim thing, we actually had a brief report that's required as part of the urgency ordinance, but we didn't get into a lot of the detail. Where we are right now is, is we're arranging the first workshop. We're trying to get all the, trying to coordinate, you know, kind of herd all the cats into a single date. Ideally sometime in February for the first workshop, but it might roll into March, depending on people's availability. But we're looking to get those discussions going soon, and then hopefully come back to council with something late spring, early summer, definitely in this fiscal year.
I know the county has, you know, offered some assistance from their perspective, and this is from the health, through the Health Action Network folks. So, and I'm sure that's who you guys have been in contact with, but if not, you know, we can certainly pass that information on. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yes, Councilman Moore?
In the event that this particular ordinance is extended for that time period, and we come to a, some sort of different conclusion sooner than that period of time, we do have the ability to rescind that or supersede that with whatever the new ordinance may be.
Right, it would be part of our action at that time. We'd rescind it as we adopt the law.
So, yeah, in the event that we're able to conclude that earlier, we don't need to extend that out.
Right.
Okay, with that, I will open this up to public comment. Yes, George?
Counsel, I still haven't heard a good rationale why we're not having this public discussion tonight. I asked for this public discussion last month, when there was very little on your agenda. As you can see, there's very little on our agenda again tonight. There hasn't been very much on our agenda this whole last year. And I don't understand why we keep kicking this ball down the road like it's going to take so much time. We should have been having these public discussions, these temporary moratoriums, these ten-month moratoriums, you know, they just, again, like I said last month, I think this just creates a whole lot of work for staff. And then I also take issue with the staff report. I'm looking through the staff report, and I'm reading all this propaganda in there about, oh, there's this likelihood of more crime and burglaries and robberies and so forth. And this is the same type of propaganda we heard when applicants came forward here to the council years ago wanting to set up a medicinal dispensary here in town. And Police Chief Bob Stewart got up, gave his big long dance, song and dance routine that he was against it. Boy, he was concerned about burglaries and robberies and pot dealing on the streets, and none of that has happened. You would all attest that very, very little or none of that has happened. You know, your real concern with the crime and problems are the bars in town. But you don't give them the type of attention that you do with this issue. So it really kind of raises the question. It's very baffling why you continue with this propaganda that this particular enterprise is so dangerous when the facts just don't bear this out. I have customers, some of my security clients here are medicinal locations all around the Bay Area. We don't see this type of hysteria that we're seeing in the report, and I don't think you folks see it either. So I don't understand the delay. You're just kicking the can down the road. I don't know, some type of political expedience, or you don't want to lead. You know, you want to see what these other cities are going to do, because you're afraid of making a mistake. On some, sometimes you guys want to be the leaders, you want to say what a trendsetter you are, and other times you want to lead from behind. So I think it's kind of ridiculous.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Eric?
I just wanted to address a potential confusion. You have an ordinance that you passed essentially saying that anyone in an apartment building or anywhere essentially outside of a personal residence can't smoke cigarettes indoors, people not to smoke marijuana outdoors. Therefore, there's a confusion, because some people will be smoking marijuana inside, and that's legal, but they can't smoke cigarettes inside because that's a punishable offense and a finable offense. It's difficult for anyone to enforce that kind of rule. It's also exceedingly difficult to try to enforce a rule if somebody's growing six plants somewhere inside an apartment building, a house, a vehicle, et cetera, simply because people can do it and have been doing it for some time. So there's a certain common sense realm. I have no problem enforcing in the apartment building I manage that people don't smoke marijuana outside, because it disturbs parents, they don't want their children to smell it, it disturbs some people that don't care for the smell of it, et cetera. I have no problem asking people not to smoke cigarettes outside for the same reasons. I have a great deal of trouble trying to tell somebody in their bedroom that's sneaking a cigarette that they can't do that. I understand the concept behind it, that some people can be impacted by the smoke, but in terms of trying to enforce a rule, it's very difficult to do so. So we can have levels of rules that become almost preposterous. I think we should try to have a certain level of common sense. If your police department's going to enforce it, there's a reality of what they can enforce and what they can't. Some people can grow marijuana outside with a certificate saying that they're growing it for medical marijuana. In terms of what somebody does in their bedroom, I think it'd be very hard for the police, and I don't want a police force that's spying in people's bedrooms because they think there's a leaf in the window. So I think we have to have kind of a common sense thing, and I do think it may take a number of months. Difficult for me to believe that people pass a statewide law and then every city goes, what do we do? I would hope that somebody would have thought about this some months before November 8th, and seemingly now, a number of people are making a living out of this one particular piece of legislation. But I would hope we would use some common sense, and certainly I think you need to have more than one or two meetings on a Wednesday night or Saturday afternoon. I think people really need to know what's going on and be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I would say, I would counter one of the arguments I heard earlier about this being ridiculous, because what is ridiculous is not taking your time and not being thoughtful about long-term ramifications. I agree with what Mr. Kirkman just said, because, you know, that law was passed, I don't think a lot of thought was put into it by a lot of people. And I think there was a reaction, because, you know, where's the harm? Well, we don't know where the harm is, and we don't know all of the ramifications of this. So I think it's prudent and thoughtful for us to try to gather some subject matter experts to attend the public meetings, because there will be questions that staff nor council will not have any answers to. And I think we need to have some of these subject matter experts here. And I've heard, I've heard this from all the cities, I've heard it from the county level, and I think what would be ridiculous is to have that public forum right here, right now, when we're not ready for it. Furthermore, you have an option to come up and speak. So if you have something to say, instead of using up three minutes and saying absolutely nothing of benefit, it would be really good to say it while you're here at the microphone. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilmember Swann.
Okay.
And I was just going to comment briefly too, and this is not to pick on any of our neighbors to the north. I just happen to have employment experience working up in Mendocino County, and I can guarantee you with any changes in the law involving cultivation, especially if it's outdoors and it's visible, it does affect crime rate, because people see it as a crime of opportunity. They see it growing, and they think they must have cash in there. So that's based on reading police reports and seeing case law that comes before me and my two and a half years up in Mendocino County. So, sorry, but the facts really are there. It's not propaganda. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Moore?
I would concur with Councilmember Delosso. If we're going to look at an ordinance that's going to incorporate the whole city, and we're talking about cultivation maybe in a commercial component, looking at the industrial parks, I think it would be best to notify as many people that could, that would be affected by that in the community, both residential and commercial, and really develop some thoughtful plans going forward on how this is going to be best served in our city. And there's no rush. I mean, unless, of course, you're trying to, you know, cultivate right away, but, you know, I don't really see the rush at this point. So I would concur with Councilmember Delosso on that one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think the general, the first general thought I had reiterates what my colleague, Councilwoman Delosso, Councilmember Moore said. This is not, you can't just use the analogy of a bar. I would agree that bars anywhere do tend to occasionally have some crime attached to them by the very nature of their goods, services, and what they are, what they do. But that's a well-known component. It's been around with us for generations, so we understand that. This is something slightly different. And although we have a good idea of the general outlines of what's before us, there's all those little details, those unexpected consequences, that we've all run into, even in the simplest of decisions, those surprises we get down the road. So I really think it is prudent to take our time, and I do agree, having numerous public meetings, to have a chance to work with our business community, our public, all of our constituents, and find what works best and is most beneficial, because, as with all change, there's some things to look to avoid here, but there's probably some benefit to be had too, and some good things to make sure we try and capture. So I think the time to try and do that and find something that works for this town would be the right direction to go. I would have to say, some of the language in here regarding enforcement problems and robberies and violence and vandalism, I hate to admit it, but I wouldn't say that it was over the top, but I would go so far as describe as my rationale, I thought it might be a little forward in its skis. But honestly, don't know. That is the interesting thing. My colleague, Councilwoman Skilman, mentioned that in her experience up north, that often outdoor grows can be crimes of opportunity. I'm just really curious with what we're looking at now, with a state law that says people have a right to grow six plants within their household with that relatively small amount, and with the ubiquity of it, if that's actually going to be a problem. I'm still curious. I'm waiting to find out, because I guess I'm holding out of touch and having no, my neighbor, I really want to see if the smell of six plants is a problem, and if we need to have laws for that or not. There's a lot of questions that are going to be difficult to handle at a city council meeting that are going to take some time for us to be able to try and get right. So I'm completely supportive of this tonight. I will agree to it, because we agreed it's temporary, but I think it's worth taking the time to look into this thoroughly. And I don't care if you lead first, that's great to do sometimes. I don't care if you're prudent and take your time either. I think what's important is you look at your win-loss record, and if you get it right, most of the time. And I have a feeling most of the time, we've done that. So I'm pretty confident with this direction. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Well, not to rehash what others said, I, rehash? Yeah. I do agree that we need to take a common sense approach. I think that this particular subject matter has been the subject matter that Catati cares about. As I understand, it was one of the more well-attended, shall we say, efforts that happened when we looked at putting a dispensary in Catati. I know that we took our time there and did the right thing by listening to what people did, and that has been successful. So I think sometimes you have to take that time, you have to listen to what the community wants and doesn't want, and, you know, take your time. Don't rush. Unfortunately, I agree with what Eric said. I think that this whole thing got put on the ballot and was rushed without the details worked out, and, you know, kind of now what. So the now what is, okay, where the rubber hits the road, and we have to figure out how to deal with it. So I don't want to be last, but I do think that we should take the time that's needed to get the experts that we need and work with the community to get it, to get the ordinance right. So with that, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I will attempt two ordinances here. I'd first like to move an ordinance, an interim ordinance, off to of an interim ordinance, opt to adopt as an urgency measure pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65858 of the City of Cattati, extending for a period of 10 months and 15 days as a temporary moratorium, except under certain circumstances, on the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes 5-0.
And Madam Mayor, along the same lines, I would like to move adoption of an interim ordinance of an urgency measure pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65858 of the City of Cattati, extending for a period of 10 months and 15 days, a temporary moratorium on the outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana.
Second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes also 5-0. So, with that, I see a changing of chairs over to the other side of the table here, and I think that means we're gonna move on to the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cattati, amending Chapter 13.68 of Title 8 of the Cattati Municipal Code titled Stormwater Ordinance to Comply with the Latest Version of the City's Municipal Stormwater Permit.
Woo!
That's a mouthful.
Okay. Okay, we have a staffer.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item is to amend the stormwater permit, I'm sorry, amend the City's Municipal Code's Chapter 13, as you had mentioned, and this is in response to having a revised, updated stormwater permit. Attached to the packet is a, is the, is the redlined version, so you can follow along with the changes that were made. And this, the ordinance addresses basically water that enters the city's stormwater system, and that works of, a network of pipes that end up discharging into local creeks. Okay, here's just an outline of the presentation, the purpose and need, followed by the background, what was the prior, the genesis of the prior ordinance, the proposed amendment, highlights of that, who was affected by these changes, and the requested action tonight. The purpose and need, the new regional stormwater permit was, became effective on January 6, 2016, and this is a, a regional permit that is shared by the City of Santa Rosa, Healdsburg, Cloverdale, Town of Windsor, the county, the Sonoma County Water Agency, Rona Park, and ourselves. And we all call, it's a collaborative effort where we pull together resources to do, you know, make the permit requirement, satisfy the permit requirements, such as public outreach, which has elements that are very similar across all, all of our jurisdictional boundaries. The new permit requires, requirements include grading restrictions and progressive enforcement measures, to the extent that are not included in the, the current Chapter 13. The state requires legal authority to enforce the new permit requirements by January 6, 2017. A year later, a few months ago, I realized we didn't have, didn't get on it in time, so I asked for an extension to April 1st, and it was granted. So, we're keeping the communications with the regional board, and they're, they're fine with, with that extension, and we're on track to make that. The proposed ordinance amendment will allow us to be in compliance, obviously, with our, our new stormwater permit. That's what's generating the need for this. Okay. Prior, so, so what's there now in our municipal code is a stormwater ordinance that was adopted in 2004. And before then, stormwater was all about getting it into the creek as quickly as possible. And then in 2004, actually prior to that, EPA came up with regulations that said, "No, we want to slow it, treat it, and have it allowed, you know, give it time to sink in and protect water quality." So, this was our first pass at, at getting it into our municipal code. And it defined discharge prohibitions, required notification of spills, the reduction, elimination of pollutants, required remediation and monitoring, did provide the city with authority to inspect, sample, and abate instances where we saw pollution, provided for a notice of violation if needed, and defined an appeal process. So, it put the framework in place, and tonight's amendments are really fine-tuning that. All right, the highlights of the proposed amendment, it, it adds activities for which discharges are exempt from these requirements. There are already a list of them, and so if you look at the, the track changes, there are some activities that are, occur as part of municipal operations, and incidental runoff from irrigation of lawns. It's not to say that these are done wantonly, it's, it's done with controls in place to protect the water quality. So, that's, that's a really, I wanted to make that clear, that it's, these aren't just standalone, allowed to flush fire hydrants, for example. No, there's, there's BMPs to be in place to dechlorinate that water before it enters the stormwater system. It's best, there's specific requirements now for construction sites, grading, and others. It authorizes the installation of sampling and metering devices on private property for compliance with the permit. It provides for a variety and range of enforcement remedies. And so, those sections of the code are on the slide there. All right, so who is affected by this? There's contract, there are contractors performing grading activities, and the prohibition of grading in steep areas, greater than 10%, that, that range of dates were, was extended. It used to begin in October 15th, that got moved back October 1st. Erosion Control BMPs are required now for all sites, and then Erosion Control Plan and SWEEPY, that's a stormwater pollution prevention plan for gradings on sites that are greater than or equal to one acre. Those have been added. The operators of industrial, commercial facilities, these are affected because they have been highlighted, marked for higher potential to impact water quality. It's just they have a higher potential for it, and so we would, there are provisions in here to check on them. And one is, the city has a right to enter, inspect, and install monitoring equipment. These are, these are gas stations, auto dismantlers, perhaps, landscape material stockpiling, supply businesses. And then the general public, just with the list of activities on that, that are allowed with those protections. I do want to make a comment on, before I leave that slide, the list of discharges that are exempted from being prohibited include landscape irrigation, lawn watering, in irrigation water. There was a comment received in, in, from the public, which we will likely hear about tonight, and the, the comment, I, I believe was, was that it's not, as it's written, it's not clear. It could, there are, it sort of infers that overwatering is okay, or, you know, it's, it's sanctioned to have that water runoff into the, the drain. Now, there are other checks and balances, but there's a lot of research the public would have to do to go back to the permit and look at certain sections and go back to, there's another standalone document that we had to submit as part of this permit, that went into detail for each one of these items, on what was required to then permit some incidental runoff or, or different things. So, for B and C, I do have some additional language I, I might be able to suggest following public comment. And then, with that, we would just open up the public hearing, and then, then following that, close a public hearing and make direct, direct staff to make any changes if necessary.
And E, before I open the public hearing, do you have any questions for that?
Yes. I was just gonna comment that it was extremely good timing, given all the run-of-storms that we've had, that we had this on the agenda tonight, so.
The only question I had, Mr. Scott, was, looking at some of the discharge prohibitions, and, and then some of the allowed discharges, how would we go about determining or encouraging dechlorinated discharge? So, when you were talking about, like, hydrant flushing and things like that?
Correct.
You're gonna run it through a filter and then let it flow out?
Oh, that, that's, that's common practice, yes. And, and this other document, it, it does specify what practice is. I mean, it's, it's a municipal practice to flush hydrants. We don't have members of the public out there.
Right. So, when we flush them now, we dechlorinate them?
Correct. In fact, during the drought years, we actually went to an innovative process where we brought in a trailer-mounted treatment unit, if you, if you remember, and we circulated a million gallons. I think it was in June or July this year, where it circulated through the treatment system, cleared up the water, and put it back into the system. So, we had no waste, no water coming back. But, but there could be years when we go back to, it's a regular routine maintenance of the system, where we just flush the hydrant into the gutter, and it would go through a dechlorination process.
Thank you.
Then I will open this up for public comment. Anyone? Yes, Neil?
Yes, good evening, council. I, I know when just coming up here, it always brings up Prue Draper. It's, it's just, she was very prominent in this building for me when we came here and had such kind words and was always involved. So, I, it does, it is a very strong sort of thing. That's very, I guess she was ready, but it's very sad. I, I do wanna bring up an item on this, that I, as we've seen with the rains, there's a lot that's going well with the stormwater system, and I've only got three minutes to be able to, to talk, so I'm just really going to focus on one item here. That, reading through this, somewhat late at night, it just sounded to me like it was difficult to understand that landscaping, irrigation, and lawn watering were not something that we wanted to encourage. They were not on the prohibited list. And reading through the, the language here, I think it should just stand out a little bit more that that's not encouraged. But I did have a chat with Craig about it, and, you know, there, and I did some research myself. I mean, it's clear that you shouldn't be discharging into the system, and it's about encouraging people who, it just maybe becomes landscape designers who is pretty accidental, but they don't sort it out. So, within the, the permit itself, it does say, page 171, "Over irrigation continues to be a problem in urban settings. While it is an allowable discharge in the non-stormwater BMP plan," is the key, "it's only allowable in infrequent isolated incidents." So, for the language in B and C, I mean, I think it's actually worth just removing it, but there is some case internally for having it there, and I'd like to suggest something that makes it very visible, that it's incident, to, to add the words in front of those, that it's incidental and minimal landscape irrigation and lawn watering that are allowed. It's a, it's a legal sort of framework, I think, or something or the other, but just to add those two words, or three words, in front of B and C, that it's incidental and minimal. And I, I sent around a, an email about that, so I, I hope you were, I hope it was able to be clear of the way that it was phrased, just so that anybody scanning the document and looking at it can be clear that it's only incidental and minimal discharges that are accepted in this category. Now, all the others, I mean, those categories are professional categories, and I think the professionals would know, would be taught to go to the BMPs to have a look at what they actually say. So, the BMP does cover this, but it's not clear until you do an hour's worth of research and find these documents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, George?
I'd like to reiterate something I've said in months past to the council. When an issue like this comes up, Mr. Scott here's done a lot of work. This is not an easy process. When, when city council has a technical question about a staff report, the time to bring up that question is before the meeting, during the week, to give staff the appropriate amount of time to answer your question and prepare a confident answer to your question for the whole council. If his answer isn't sufficient, by all means, council, you have the right to, to follow up on that question and so forth. But I don't like how you blindside staff with some of these questions sometimes, that just seem like you're just trying to make yourself look smart, like you've read your report. I think we're all pretty confident that you're reading your, your, your agendas and staff reports and so forth, but, you know, I don't like blindsiding staff like this, and you're, you're not getting it. If something comes up during the discussion, something new, and you need to bring it up, that's fine. I'm completely on board with you. But this type of, these little, these little efforts to put staff on, 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 on the spot, it's in your council member's handbook. It spells it out. This is not something that you want to do. It's not good for policy, and it wastes time as well.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so, with that, um...
Any other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Eric.
Over to Mayor.
No, I appreciate, I didn't see Eric saying, gotta put it up higher, Eric, sorry.
You want me to be more demonstrative?
It's okay.
I don't wanna go into all the details, 'cause this is technical, but I mean, to put it in a very base sense, it's kind of, when I was a child, you don't pour oil down the storm drain. You don't put chemicals down. You don't use it as a way to deposit things that you should put elsewhere. I have a concern, because I've brought things before the council regarding people parking their vehicles along the Laguna de Santa Rosa, which is a nice way for saying the storm drain, because that's what it is, doing construction that may or may not be permitted, may or may not be, excuse me, gentlemen, contracted, and could, with water, wash chemicals off wood, off debris, certainly a vehicle that's parked for months where, as far as I'm concerned, it shouldn't be. So, it's kind of a thing of where do we enforce, and at what level? I also have concern, which has nothing to do with this ordinance, with the fact that our storm drains, which has become the Laguna de Santa Rosa, has nice cement lift, which allows for less water transfer during a storm, and now has trees in it. They haven't been cleared. Again, back in the day when it was a small quaint little town, we used to have a dirt storm ditch, and a bulldozer went through. I don't know that it was the city's or not, but I have to believe it was the city or the county, and they cleared it out every year. Now, our storm drains aren't cleared out, and they collect all kinds of debris, not from industrial necessarily, but it's a nice place for people to throw garbage. And unfortunately, the storm drains don't process the way they did 20 years ago, because they now have less water flow, because it was filled with cement, which I guess was sort of kept clean, but now trees have grown up through it and it's cracked. Again, I believe it's county, not the city, because that's what I tend to get when I ask city, "Oh, it's not our problem." Well, it's a problem to me, because where I am, the ground floods because the drain backs up, and it's because it has less capacity than it once did. This has nothing to do with this ordinance, but I would hope that you can direct staff to see if the county can clear the storm drains before our next set of debris comes down, because it is an issue.
Sorry.
It's okay. You don't have to follow the rules.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone? Anyone else? All right. So, I have a question. Do we have a procedure for clearing storm drains? A process? Is there a process or procedure?
Yes, that was an evidence in during these storms. The Public Works crews are active, you know, activated, whether it's Monday through Friday or the weekend or whenever the storm's there, to, to clear our storm drains, our MS Forest system. And then the county has a creek maintenance program, and we saw them out there at the Laguna de Santa Rosa, clearing out brush and providing that clear hydraulic capacity. So we work in, and the two systems have, are cleared. I mean, efforts are in, are done to clear them as best we can.
So we do then have a process to be able to get hold of the county on the ones that we see within the city that are, are the responsibility of the county to contact them?
Yes, Katati Creek and Laguna, the, the big ones are at the counties. And we did, we do bring that to their attention when it becomes a problem, or appears to be perceived to be a problem.
Okay. My other question or comment is that you said you had some suggested language based upon your discussion, did you, could you share that with us?
Correct. I do wanna be responsive to the comment we, we received from Neil Hancock, and as, as back, for the background, these are concerning items B and C on page 81 of the packet. This is 136860B2A and B, A, B and C, sorry, landscape irrigation, lawn watering and irrigation water. The companion document that talks about what you need to do reads, reads like this, "Conditions under which incidental," it's, it's item 14, "Incidental runoff of potable water from urban landscape irrigation. Conditions under which allowed, A, incidental runoff, irrigation runoff is in minimal quantities." So it's, they're twice incidental in the, they're lead, and then also minimal quantities. And then best management practices to be implemented, "All landscape irrigation must comply with the city's water waste ordinance, which prohibits runoff and breaks or leaks in the delivery system." And then B addresses a new, the installation of new landscape must comply with the city's water efficient landscape ordinance. There's, so there's multiple levels of protection here, but I think the point that we're trying to address is, if someone's just looking at our municipal code, it's, it's not clear, you'd have to go searching further in these other documents. So to make the municipal code reader, to make it more clear to that person, we could, we're okay, I'm okay, city manager concurs, we could add incidental and minimal runoff from landscape irrigation and lawn watering, and then add that to, to the C, incidental and minimal runoff from irrigation water. Is that clear? Okay. It just helps to clarify, it doesn't change it, it just clarifies it.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Quick question, right on this subject. Do I appreciate the flexibility? I think there's some value in that, because by the time, as a, as an end user, by the time I looked this up online and found this, I might be led to the same conclusion, so I think there's some value. Just curious, procedurally, would it be best to add the incidental and minimal language, or would it just be best to say, for example, V, "Landscape irrigation and lawn watering, parentheses referred to," and you mentioned a document number, "or as described or within?" That's usually the type of language, I'll say C, like in J P As or something like that, where they refer back to a deeper controlling document?
One issue, potential issue with that is this document could change from time to time, so we'd have to make it a-
That's enough right there, that's all I needed to know. I like the first idea, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a, a point of clarification when you were talking about the, the storm drains and the creeks. My understanding is that the creeks are the purview of the Snob County Water Agency? Is that correct?
Correct.
And so they're the ones that are in charge of keeping that clear and making sure that there's, it doesn't flow, et cetera?
Correct.
Overflow, I should say. And, and then I understand that they've gone from the concept of cementing all of the creeks, to going back to the natural creek critter type enhancements to the creeks, so it's more of a natural drainage and flow there.
Yeah, it's a mix. If you, if you're downtown and you look at Katati Creek at that bridge by the Katati Market, and you look over, there, there's concrete down there.
Right.
But then you go to the Laguna and it's all natural.
Right.
But, but you're correct, the trend is-
To get away from the concrete.
Correct, yeah.
My only concern with the language in adding incidental and minimal is how do you really define minimal? You know, I mean, it's one of those nebulous terms, you know, minimal to you might be minimal different to somebody else. So, I mean, I wouldn't hurt anything, but I don't know that it's gonna encourage anything. Yeah, that's about it on this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, we got sidetracked looking at B and C, and I just wanted to point out some of the questions about how the channels are supposed to perform in terms of their ability to clear waste material during storms and stuff. It's certainly true, the old days of the concrete culverts probably had more capacity for that sort of action, and you could put a bulldozer in them, which is something that just doesn't happen anymore. I think it, it's very true, as we were just talking about, there's a completely different way of looking at what the best benefit overall for everybody, from how to take care of and use the infrastructure, the watershed. They just had a seminar this morning, a Russian River Friendly Landscaping Event, this is the fourth one they've had, and this is for landscape design professionals. So it's people at work every day putting in landscapes, as well as people who design them. And I just wanted to share the title with you, it was "Supply in the Sky: Storm Water as a Resource." If you think about that for a minute, that tells you it's a completely different way of looking at things, 'cause it's true, when some of us in the audience, certainly my age group, we were younger, the first thing you thought when a lot of water came, you wanted to get it out as quickly as possible and out to sea, so you didn't have flooding problems backing up. But now it's recognized, although you wanna avoid problems like that, there's a lot more value in trying to save, soak, be more thoughtful how you deal with that. So, just kind of the reality of what we're dealing with, but it was worth pointing out because it points out why we're seeing this. I mean, some of this is just some really simple ministerial changes, but in terms of some of the enforcement actions, when it comes to the watershed, yeah, there is some new material, and it's, it's a different ballgame. Some things may be a little problematic compared to the past, but I think overall there's a great benefit in it. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, 'cause I just wanted to share that, I thought it was timely.
Vice Mayor? Okay, so. We're just introducing this, so we don't, do we need a motion to live in? Okay. Do we have one? So I would like to move to introduce an ordinance amending chapter 13.68 of Title 8 of the Katati Municipal Code titled "Stormwater Ordinance" to comply with the latest version of the city's municipal stormwater permit with the suggested language by Mr. Scott.
I'll second that.
Title 13? Title 13, I was just corrected.
Roman numerals.
My Roman numerals are off. All right, with the amendment to Title 13.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes by vote. So now we will move on to item 11A, the Cal Ripken Babe Ruth Baseball License Agreement for Use of City Recreation Facilities. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, as you all may recall, a year ago, we entered into a one-year agreement with Cal Ripken Babe Ruth Baseball for a limited-term license agreement for the use of some of the city's parks, Putnam Park and Cater Park specifically. And the agreement basically is, is substantially similar to the ones attached to the staff report, the term being the primary difference. And the other difference is maybe the degree of maintenance, you know, with a longer-term license agreement. With that certainty, I think the, you know, Babe Ruth Baseball is more willing to make improvements to the baseball facilities, given the fact that they'll have it for up to five years. And it's a non-exclusive license agreement, which means other things can occur in those areas, so they don't, in other words, they can't like chain it off and nobody else can use it. So it's a, it's a shared use for a term of five years. As you'll see, and this is on packet page 96, it has the various responsibilities of the city and Cal Ripken Baseball. And on page 97, they are assuming some utilities under article nine there. And then, and then finally, on page 98, so termination, termination provision, which lays out the, the 30-day termination clause, if for whatever reason either party doesn't wanna continue in the license agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Question? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Do we have a representative here, by any chance, from Cal Ripken's tonight, Mr., Mr. City Manager?
Uh, we did.
We talked about storm drains too long. Maybe that's our fault, so. I just wanted to ask, and I, first of all, just a general comment, very pleased with the results of the partnership within one year, very pleased with the upkeep and the value that's provided to the community, so I think that's just great. But as I looked at going to a five-year contract, at first I wanna ask a question, do we know if the scoreboard is functioning at Cater Field? It looks like it is not, but I wanted to ask and ascertain, it certainly looks like it could use some maintenance.
I, you know, I don't know the answer to that question.
All right, well, what I wanted to ask was this, and this is why I wanted to see if we had somebody here. I was wondering if we could get, make sure that sign would be fixed, painted, working within a reasonable amount of time within this five-year contract we're looking at? Because as you do look at page 96, the general descriptions of the things they're responsible for, it looks like it would be implied. "Responsible for maintenance of operation of facilities, all cure, including without limitation, repair and maintenance of all baseball-related infrastructure, including painted as needed." That's in section seven, maintenance and operation, I skipped around a little. But in general, it seems reasonable, so I wonder if we could just have that side note put in there, perhaps in this agreement? Because everything else is looking at, I think that's the one piece of infrastructure that's not back up and working appropriately. And I, with the job they've done, I'd be willing to support this tonight, but I would like to see that as part of the agreement, I think there'd be some value for the community there we should capture.
Okay, yeah, without speaking to, without speaking to him, I wouldn't know, but I, I don't think they'd ever problem with including the specific provision in there too, to make it explicit instead of a general statement.
Okay, very good.
'Cause I think that's their expectation anyway, just to maintain it.
So we could perhaps make that part of the motion tonight after discussion?
Yes.
So, in reading through this, I know when we talked about this last year, I strongly encouraged the one-year, simply because, you know, Ranch Katati Little League, so there's Little League Baseball and there's Cal Ripken, there's two different, Cal Ripken has its own movement, it's quite strong and very effective. But I was just shocked, and I tried to contact several people, I mean, I was on the board for about seven years probably, I was president, I got that scoreboard, by the way, 'cause I sold my soul to Coke or Pepsi, whoever it was.
I think it was Coke.
Yeah, whatever. You do those things sometimes. And I was just really concerned that there was just no communications from, from anybody from Little League. And I guess I, I hate to say this, after all the blood, sweat and tears of mowing and watering and stuff that I did for I don't know how long, that, you know, we're, we're sort of giving up. And it's not our job to say, "Hey, Little League Baseball, get your act together and constitute a board and do what you have to do." There were some horrific stories I had heard, whether they're true or not, I don't know, from finances, so just not gonna deal with that anymore. And, okay, so I'm babbling, so I'll just move on. I will say on page 97, packet page 97, under item nine, utilities, it says, "Cal Ripken Baseball shall transfer the accounts to Cal Ripken Baseball." I think that's kinda cool, but I'm guessing you meant the city Katati would transfer to Cal Ripken?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
I kinda figured that, all right, good. And the other thing that I did for the longest time too was, when the board is reconstituted each year and there's new members, is, and this kind of falls under item 22, under contacts and notices, I would just suggest that the city has provided a board list with names, addresses, emails, their titles on the board. You should just have a complete list, it's not something they're not doing, it's, it's available, I'm sure. Little League Baseball, we used to do that every year, whoever was the different positions, and so you had contact information if something was to go awry, and I would just keep that in mind and at least ask them for that. Doesn't really have to be a part of this, you know, this agreement, it's not that critical, but I think a simple, you know, it'd be really great if you provided us all the contact info and the names and their, their positions and titles, I think that'd be a smart thing. Thank you.
I just have one question, I was, I couldn't exactly glean it from here, and that's that it specifically mentions the Cater Field Snack Shack, but there is a Snack Shack at Putnam, and, and I don't really see that one mentioned as far as, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I can't read. It specifically calls out the Cater Field Snack Shack, and I just wanted to be sure that they were responsible for both snack shacks, not just one. 'Cause I know in the past we've had issues with the one over at Putnam Park.
Yeah, they are responsible for both. Which, which provision specifically were you referring to?
Well, the maintenance and operations, it's, you know, it talks about in the utilities, it, it kinda mentions the operation of the Snack Shack, and it mentions both, but in the, in the financial considerations, it really talks about maintenance and utilities for the Cater Field Snack Shack, and I didn't know whether that was just because it got summarized in the staff report and put that way, or they are responsible. I just, I just wanna be sure that it's both of them.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll say under section five, under use, several times under items B and C, it refers to the snacks shacks, it has it in parentheses, so, 'cause I remember reading through this, and I remember reading it, so I, I think it's understood.
Okay.
As explicit as possible is always better.
Yeah, you know, I, I understand, in the, what you're saying in the staff report under financial considerations, it specifically just says cater.
Right.
Snack Shack, but in the agreement, it refers to both, right?
And then in the utilities, it just says, "Operation of the Snack Shack." So that also implies one.
It, it's confusing, but I, I think they actually have that covered. It says sewer expenses related to the operation of the Snack Shack and restroom facilities. So it's that plural for restroom-
Yeah.
That implies the both located at Cater Field and Putnam Park Baseball Field. So that's pretty specific, and then if you wrap it in with the general stuff that Mr. Delosso pointed out in the recitals, which indicate that it's both snack shacks, and they get the plural very clearly there. It's a good call, it was worth checking, but I think we got enough there to be safe.
That's fine, as long as, as long as they're both covered.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Of staff, just one more question. Under section seven, maintenance and operations, under A, Roman numeral five, is, you know, the, the outfield fence at Putnam has been up for probably now, eh, 12 years, maybe, thereabouts, pretty close. And it doesn't, I mean, I live right there, it doesn't seem to be an issue, you know, soccer games get played, impromptu football games, dog park activities, people playing on the ball field. And my only concern is, because this happened to us once, when we were digging the posts for the fence, to install the fence one year, in about an hour, there was this large bubble of lawn out in the middle of the field, while we had hit a water line, and it hadn't, it didn't shoot up, but it just, it was kinda cool to pop it just to see what would happen, but, so I, you know, trying to move away from that, I, I don't know, is there a real reason or impetus to remove that fence? It doesn't seem to be an issue with, with anybody who goes to that park, and I'm there a lot. I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no competing uses, there's no real, there's no, there's no reason to remove it, I think it's more of a general maintenance issue, that it doesn't look kinda dilapidated and falling over. But that's something, we can modify the language to express that concern rather than just straight-up requirement of removal.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, if it happened once, it could easily happen again, to hit a water line and cause all kinds- happen again, to hit a water line and cause all kinds of issues. Thank you.
Is that it for questions? Okay, I'll open this up. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Yes, Lillian.
I don't want to appear to be redundant, I think that's the word I'm looking for. But what kind of herbicide are we using on these parks where children play, dogs play, people walk on? What kind of pesticide, herbicide are we using? Are we using Roundup? I mean, we're talking earlier about off-run from various places into our storm, whatever, and what kind of herbicide or pesticide are we using? I asked this in the past, and I've never gotten a reply, but more people think, scientific people, think that Roundup is not a very good agent to use on lawns and various other places. What are we doing to protect our children, our citizens, our dogs? I mean, why is everybody ignoring that? It, it has a runoff, it goes into the underground aquifers, so why is that being ignored? I was told the last time I was here that somebody was going to get back to me regarding Roundup, especially where I live, I think it's Caterfield. Why are we ignoring that? We're talking about various things, contracts, special parks, and nobody's addressing one of the most serious problems we're having in the world. People are marching constantly. So, I mean, when is the public going to get an answer or an opportunity for input into these situations? We have playgrounds, and when, when are we going to get an answer to this? Are we going to get an answer to this? I'm asking for an answer right now. Am I getting, I'm just a indifferent?
I would, I would be delighted to answer, but we have, we have to wait for you to sit down, and, and I have an answer for you, I'd be happy to address that issue.
Great, I will sit down.
Thank you, Lillian.
I don't know if there's more public?
Yes, George.
Lillian is absolutely correct, she has asked that question in the past, and I apologize to Lillian that she hasn't gotten an answer, but maybe we'll get an answer here tonight. You know, Lillian, that was very thoughtful to bring those issues forward, and I, I do feel bad that you don't get answered, answers to many of your questions. And one of the reasons, one of the reasons that staff did not answer your question tonight, Mr. Lammon, about the condition of the, the scoreboard, is because Mr. Obit is not perfect. He's trying to do the best job he can to be prepared, to put forth a great city council meeting, but he doesn't have all the answers. And if you have a question, it's your duty to ask the man during the week so he can give you the answers that you need to make an informed decision so that you can get home early, because you're always concerned about how long these meetings go, and then citizens have to come up and remind you that you have plenty of time. I think sometimes you'd just like to listen to yourself talk. And if there's a typo in the report, by all means, email the man and let him know, hey, there's a typo here. He can correct it, and he can acknowledge the fact that, hey, Mr. Deloso did point out there's a typo here on this line, this section, and so forth. That's, I mean, if you go to other city council meetings, you see that that's the way it's done, you know, and you need to throw this guy a bone once in a while, you know? Get off your high horses and try to, stop looking like you're so, so high and mighty with your intuitive and deep intellectual thought about how well that you're reading these reports. We know you're going through your reports, no one's going to question your hard work in getting through these reports, but if you want the answers, you got to ask the man beforehand. And take a drive down to the scoreboard, take a look at it, just like you went down to the homeless parking area that you voted for a few months ago and found out that there's no sound wall there. Mr. Lammon said there's a sound wall there. Mr. Lammon had you driven down there, or just drive around the city once in a while, look around the city that you're helping to manage. And you'll find out there is no sound wall down there, and it's very loud. And you corrected me that, no, there's a sound wall there, and because I live very close to a sound wall, that there's one down there. There isn't. Do your homework, give staff a break here.
Any, any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, in terms of taking a drive, I agree, that's a darn good idea. And perhaps you missed it because you were thinking about what you were going to say next earlier, but I mentioned tonight, I actually went down to look at the scoreboard. And I did, and all of us do that quite often. So that's one point I want to make. The other thing I have to say, I'm not sure who in this room likes to listen to themselves talk the most, I'll leave that to the audience to judge. And also will point out, I'm very disappointed to hear Mr. Obit, evidently you're not perfect, we're going to, we're going to have to work on that. But getting back to something more serious and more important, I wanted to point out to Ms. Font, we did hear you, I don't know why you haven't had an answer yet, but probably because we did ask, and you may remember, I asked Mr. Obit if we could have this come back as a discussion in the council for people such as yourself who are interested in this to talk about, because I agree, it's worthwhile. So nobody's being ignored. What we're doing is doing the business of the city the way we're supposed to. So I'm sure you'll be part of this discussion, and I look forward to talking to you, I think you'll have some valuable input for us. Thank you for bringing it up again.
Councilmember Deloso.
Thank you. So to address the issue of things like Roundup and whatnot, so there's two different things, competing efforts in the parks. So there's the city's maintenance and what the city does or contracts out to do, but I'm going to just give you the perspective from Little League Baseball. We maintained Putnam Park, excuse me, Caterfield, Putnam Park, and, and also the smaller side of Caterfield for the little kids that play T-ball. All they need is some grass and a butterfly, and they're happy. But we, we never, in all the years I was involved, we never used any chemical applications. And what you do is, at the beginning of the year, you go in with some machinery, you churn up all the dirt in the infield, that's, and then you literally hand-pull weeds. So that's what we did. And, and now, there, there may be some use of fertilizers, which again, can certainly get into the, the storm drains and into the water system, and that's probably not a good thing. That's why lawns are not so favored anymore. But I will tell you from the baseball perspective that it's just, it's grunt labor, and that's what, that's what the kids do really well. You go out there and pull all the weeds that you guys can pull, and that's what we used to have them do while we stood there and pontificated. So I just want you to have some reassurance that when Little League is taking care of a field, you're, you're not going to see use of chemical applications. I don't know if the city manager or anybody wants to address what the contractor does as far as weed control, but from the baseball perspective, it never happens.
Anyone else?
I don't have one.
Oh, okay.
A couple of years ago, I think we addressed this, and we talked about some of the materials used by the contractors that are maintaining the parks, and some of them do use some variations of Roundup and different herbicides and pesticides. We have never brought it back yet to determine if that's still a program that we want to allow under the contracting of that. It is good to know that, in baseball, they do do the manual weeding, weeding on that. But yes, we have used Roundup and various derivatives of the Roundup.
And so I'll, I'll just interject here, that, that we can, we can come back with a more full discussion, but basically, for the fields, there's, there's no Roundup application in the fields. It's really just, there is some very limited Roundup application that is done, like along sidewalk and along the cracks in some of the planted, like landscape areas, where you actually have some sort of decorative landscape, and, you know, you're talking commercial landscapers who don't necessarily have, you know, a team of eight-year-olds to hand-pull weeds. So just, just as a matter of, I guess, reality, there is some limited application as things emerge with Roundup, and, but not, it, it's never on the field. I mean, besides the fact that it would kill all the grass, it would also just not be cost-effective to do that sort of thing. So it's only in some really limited applications.
Okay, so, with that.
Ready? Ready for a motion? I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute a five-year extendable license agreement between the City of Kattati and Cal Ripken Babe Ruth Baseball for the use of Caterfield and Putnam Park Baseball Field.
I'll second that with an amendment, perhaps a friendly amendment, and include repair to the Cater scoreboard in a timely fashion.
That'd be fine by me, yes, I'd accept that.
We have a motion in a second, all in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, I vote. So with that, we, well, do we have a staff report on the Measure G?
Yes, yes, we, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So on January eleventh of this year, the Measure G Citizens Oversight Committee convened and reviewed the Measure G annual report for fiscal year fifteen sixteen, as required by Measure G, which is codified in the City's Municipal Code, Section three point zero five point one four zero. And from, so this is, this is the second year of annual reporting on Measure G, and it was the first year we had a complete year of revenue. The prior year was a partial year of Measure G revenue. So being this was the, the second time that the Oversight Committee had reviewed the report for the next, for the second fiscal year, we did get some comments the first time around, which was the Oversight Committee would appreciate sort of a introductory and detailed discussion of the council's strategic planning process and what the strategic, strategic planning and budget outcomes were for the fiscal year they're considering the report for. So this year, and just, actually just recently, we, we described the fiscal year fifteen sixteen, strategic priorities, as well as how they translated into the adopted budget for fifteen sixteen, you know, so they, so they understood the context. And, you know, after the public workshops, the strategic planning budget workshops, the draft budget workshops, and the final adoption, public meetings, so numerous public meetings to discuss what the priorities were and which resulted in the budget, they, they basically looked at all the information and compared it to how Measure G was actually implemented in the year. And at the conclusion of the meeting, the Oversight Committee unanimously approved of the language, approved the language of the letter to the city, of the city council, and that letter is behind the Measure G report, it's kind of hidden back there behind the report itself, but it's the last page of the item, so it's packet page one thirty-eight. And essentially, they just found that they were, the funds were expended in a manner that met both the letter and the intent of Measure G. And one of the things that the committee did say, although it's not in the letter, but they, you know, discussed it during the meeting, was the importance of Measure G and, and the economic development of Kattati. And so they did, there was a, there was a request to incorporate that in the future as they review these, and it was really stressed, because part of their role, part of the Oversight Committee's role, is communication with the public and giving the staff and the city council input on how to best communicate how Measure G is being used. And that was one thing that was passed along, was that, that should be something stressed in public communications about its role in, in promoting economic development in the city, and the importance of it, in addition to all the other things that Measure G also enables the city to do. So with that, I have Norm here to answer any questions, and myself as well, of course.
Questions? Yeah? Open this up for public comment? Yes, George?
Well, it's proven out that this Measure G Oversight Committee was a complete joke. These are handpicked individuals, what, what, one or two or three handpicked individuals onto this committee to basically rubber stamp the city council's propaganda and narrative about this unfair sales tax increase. The council had decided that they were not going to put anybody on this committee, this subcommittee, that wasn't entirely in favor of Measure G. So that gives away immediately how biased the report is. And we must remember that Measure G passed some fifty-two percent to forty-eight percent, give or take a percentage. That measure barely passed the public. By the skin of its teeth, it passed, yet there was not one member on that subcommittee that took issue with the measure, the tax measure, and in my judgment, looked at the numbers fairly and objectively. There was no healthy debate in the subcommittee, looking at this, the, the numbers and running the report. And I think it speaks volume of how you've led this community awry with the subcommittee and with Measure G. There's no way for you to explain what might have been the revenues to come into, to Kattati, had the measure not passed. And I believe, had we not passed Measure G, actually more revenue would have come into the city. By lowering the sales tax rate, we would have been more competitive with our neighbors from the north and the south, and in the long run, we would have been, brought in more tax revenue. I believe that this tax measure was punitive in the long run, it drove businesses out of town, yes, there were some businesses that came to town, but it, it drove some businesses out of town, and it drove, it drove some consumers out of town. There, we had citizens come here specifically to say before the council, I will not spend my money in this town anymore. Now, they don't speak for everybody in this town, but they came here, and they told you as much. So I think this whole subcommittee issue has been a farce and a joke.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close, comment on that, bring it back. Anyone, anything to say? Okay.
I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor, I just got notes all over the place, I'm trying to look at them, give me just one second here to get to the page I wanted to.
Certainly.
First of all, I think there's some clarity in exactly what the result is here. If we look at, on packet page one twenty-four, there's a pretty clear layout, very basic, but a pretty clear layout of the benefits, a summary, if you will, the public benefit for the public that Measure G was able to make for them, starting in fourteen fifteen and going through fifteen sixteen. There's a few highlights, certainly the public safety program, preserving our local police department, some people seem to care about that, maybe not everybody, but I believe the majority of people in Kattati. It goes into some detail about how that's been. It talks about going some basic improved services in other areas, such as traffic signals, roadway maintenance, landscaping, safety, local road repair, which was promised. Bottom line, come to think of it, I guess the bottom point is, Measure G did exactly what it promised to do. So you're certainly entitled to your opinion, because as we all know nowadays, we have alternative facts. But the facts as we see them here is, it did what it promised. So I just wanted to share that with the public.
Any other comments? I do like that summary, I hope that we will keep that up, because I think it's nice to have in one spot, year to year, over the whole period of the measure, so that people can see in, in one spot, you know, all the things that have been done with Measure G. So we're just to receive this, correct, no action?
Correct, no action, just received.
Okay. Thank you for all. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for bringing this forth to the group. I understand that they were appreciative of, you know, kind of having a context, which I know the first year they didn't have that, and so I appreciate you putting that together. And the report, I think we should, you know, have available to people so that they can see where Measure G is spent. With that, did you have comments?
Yeah, I was just going to add that after tonight, Norm will post it on the website as well as the letter from the Oversight Committee. So it's available to everyone, in addition to it in the packet, of course.
And thank you, Norm, for all your hard work on this.
Is that the question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may.
If I might. So I understand this year, the committee did have some discussion and requested some more information, context in terms of economic development. Were they looking for, in terms of results from efforts, or were they looking for the general framework of how we're laying out economic development in the years to come using Measure G, or a mix of both? I'm just curious.
Well, so I think I, the way I heard it was more in the context of their role in terms of public communication of economic development benefits. And maybe trying to, when speaking to the public about it, trying to message the benefits that Measure G provides in terms of developing economic growth in the city, so generally speaking.
Okay.
But I think, you know, the perspective they were coming from was that a lot of the focus that you see in the report is about, you know, services and about infrastructure, all the things, you know, the things that the city would never be able to do without having Measure G. And I think they, I think the feeling was is that the, while those things are true, it also serves a real economic development benefit, you know, benefit, and that's maybe not highlighted in the report, and so it would be good to...
I could see the, I can see the basic problem is, some of the benefits that you just mentioned, that I actually was talking about earlier, are tangible ones. They're visible, they're facts, it's easy to do. But in terms of economic development, some of that is harder to see because it's usually something that happens in the future from an investment that's made currently. So I guess that maybe that answers the question for us. I guess what they'll be looking for, what we'll be hearing about, is a little of both, for short-term, how it's being invested, and what the goals we want to see from it hopefully are. So, good. I think it's a great improvement, and I think they're moving forward with this, and it's getting to a point where it's easy to see with some clarity, and it's also being responsive to what the committee's looking for. So, very good.
And I also think that showing that connection, where things that we do, say for instance, say, an improvement that we made, or a service we're able to add, how that leads to more economic development, you know, kind of making that connection, I think will help. Okay. So with that, any other comments? No? All right? We okay? We have received and filed. Thank you so much. With that, we will move on to Item 11C, which is the agreement to perform a performance review of Redwood Empire Disposal. Do we have a staff report on that?
We do, yes. I have a brief report on this. Just as way of background, the city entered into a franchise agreement...
Damien, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Oh, sorry.
Madam...
Yes?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself, please.
Oh, okay. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So just as way of background, the city entered into a franchise agreement for solid waste collection services with Redwood Empire Disposal in 2013. As you know, the, there was litigation around the franchise agreement that delayed addressing some aspects of the city's relationship with Redwood Empire Disposal, including the rates in the initial performance review, which would typically be done at the, kind of the front end of a franchise agreement. Litigation was dismissed, and so now the city and Redwood Empire Disposal have resumed discussions on both the rates and this performance review. In accordance with Section 8.3 of the franchise agreement with Redwood Empire Disposal, the city can perform up to two performance reviews at Redwood Empire Disposal's expense during the term of the franchise agreement. And if the, if those reviews find any issues of noncompliance, then the review wouldn't count towards the two, so the city could then do another one as part of the franchise agreement. And at the city council meeting on January 10th, the city council reviewed the detailed rate analysis report that was conducted by R3 and then directed staff to initiate a service review of Redwood Empire Disposal, which is, the scope of work of which is attached to this staff report. And like I touched on briefly, it is best practice to conduct a performance review early in the franchise agreement term, and another near the end. And the purposes, of course, are to, you know, with a complicated agreement like this, once your contractor settles into a routine of service, but upfront in the beginning of the franchise agreement, to just check how they're doing, if they're actually implementing all the provisions, there's lots of provisions in the franchise agreement that they're implementing them all. And, you know, the community is getting what it's paying for, so to speak. And assuming that there's no, you know, the intent is if there's any significant issues, it catches it upfront. You know, the last thing you want is at the end of the franchise term to find big issues that haven't been addressed for 10 years, and then it's a, you know, it's kind of a, it's just a bigger issue to deal with. So if you deal with it upfront, it's a best practice, and then if there's minor deficiencies, you correct them and you move on. And then near the end of the term of the franchise agreement, again, it's best practice to run another performance review at that time, to make sure they haven't strayed from their obligations, as was verified with the first franchise, or the first service review. The attached agreement is by R3, who are experts in solid waste collection and operations, and they are the organization that performed the detailed rate review analysis for the city that the council and the public heard on January 10th. And they have a proposed scope of work here to do the service review. And like I mentioned, this wouldn't cause any financial impact to the city because it's a fully reimbursable agreement by Redwood Empire Disposal. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
And just, I was just going to clarify, so tonight, we're just looking at whether we want to give permission to do the performance review, because it doesn't have to do with rate increases at this point.
Correct. This has nothing to do with rates. It's only to look at the service review.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager of it, I wonder if you could just go a little more into Items 2A and 24, the two optional pieces of the base proposal. And I think they're both interesting ones. I think the staff recommendation is to include them both, and I'm leaning that way, but I thought it would be worth just having a little better explanation. We're looking at Packet Page 151, and this is under Item 2, kind of at the top of the page. And this is talking about doing an optional basement total, including a cost of service justification specific to keeping a tiered rate structure.
That's the next item.
Wow.
Can you read that item?
I think the public side, I must be in a hurry to go home. My apologies. I guess you don't need to, you can fill me in on that later. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's okay. Do they actually look at the details in the review of the service? I couldn't quite get that. So the thing that comes to mind is, are they performing things like the street sweeping when they're supposed to be doing? It kind of talks about training, but I didn't really see specifically that. We had a note from someone stating that their street sweeping wasn't happening, and I haven't noticed them. I used to see them all the time, you know, out there, and I haven't really noticed them in a while. So I was curious about that. And also, will they be looking at things like any literature that they put out in ensuring that it has correct information on it? As I understand it, they put a postcard out, and it had an incorrect telephone number on it. I obviously didn't get that postcard, but maybe they were selective in who they sent it to. So do they look at those kinds of things? I couldn't quite tell that.
It seems like under Tasks, under Five, there's multiple tasks, and it looks like it's sort of addressed in those.
Yeah, so the...
I want to be sure.
Well, with, you know, with the, like, the route audits, it's, that's part of what they'll be looking at, I think, with the street sweeping and the routes, the garbage collection routes themselves. But, you know, I certainly can make sure that that's included, you know. I mean, the scope is fairly broadly written because they're trying to encompass all of it.
Right, right.
But those sort of specific issues that have recently come up, you know, the street sweeping issue, or the wrong number on a piece of customer literature.
Yeah.
Like that, for example, under Task 5.3, where you have consumer information and public education requirements, I think they, normally they would look at it, just generally what they're, you know, what they're producing, but if there's, you know, specific examples of errors in the material, we can bring it to R3's attention so that they can be aware of it.
And I'm assuming that on the route audits, that they will actually go check, because as I mentioned before, I think that they have a hard time with leaving containers in upright position. And I really, again, I hope as part of the audit, that they also will kind of take a look see, just generally speaking, about the condition of the cans that we get, because at least when I'm walking around, I'm noticing that, you know, there's a lot of broken containers. Now, I know when they were here the last time, they said, "Oh, all you have to do is call," which, you know, I didn't, I didn't realize that, but, you know, I guess I could get my phone out and as I walk around, kind of mention all of them. But anyways, so those are the kinds of things that, you know, just kind of I've noticed, and it does have an impact. It does have an impact on the look of our community. You know, if you're going down the street and there's, you know, garbage in the street, or the cans are all knocked over, you know, that's, that's not a good sight to see, so...
Yeah, I mean, part of, you know, part of their data collection as well is, is going to be talking with the city, and, you know, will certainly bring up these things that we've experienced from customer complaints.
Yeah, and it's interesting because they talk about gathering the customer complaints, but I'm not sure that, you know, I, for one, when I'm out walking and I see all this, I don't call and make a whole bunch of complaints and say, "Oh, well, you know, these 10 streets I walked down, you know, I saw this many, you know, whatevers." And maybe I should, but, you know, I don't tend to do that. I just assume that they're doing the service that they're paid to be doing for us. Did you have a question?
I think you covered it. I was going to point out, I just noticed that customer complaint log, and of course, the question is, does it actually pick up everything, though? And I was just going to ask and suggest if there's a process to pick up. Certainly, we do get some complaints from time to time at the city here. I think we've all received at least a few over the years, not many. But certainly with looking at this, we'll see some more, too. Is there a process to fold those in? For example, the recent one regarding the potential reduction in street sweeping, at least in one neighborhood, some of those things? So we can make sure this is all captured for the reviewer, and it all gets back for Red to comment, and then the whole thing comes in front of us so we have the best sense possible of the service we're getting.
Yeah, part of the data collection is talking to Redwood Empire Disposal from their own data sets, right, their own customer complaint logs. But the city will be providing them all of the complaints that we're aware of as well. Even if Redwood Empire doesn't have that same complaint in their log, we would be certainly providing it to R3.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? One second. I do have one speaker card on this item. Marion, did you want to speak on this item? Marion Coghlan? Yeah.
I'm not sure that if this is the time to say anything about how Redwood Empire Disposal might make some money. For instance, I wrote a letter to you saying that I'm wondering if they're still selling the compost material. And in the past, I have, you know, gone there and bought wonderful, quality compost, and it's from our collective green can, you know, yard waste. And I'm wondering if they're still doing that, and if that's a way for them to make some money? Because I paid for it when I bought my compost. And another way that they might make some money is, I've heard that they were somehow able to capture the fumes from the decaying material and turn it into usable energy, maybe even to transfer it, like, I don't know if they'd store it in a battery or what they do, but is there such a program? Did they ever have such a program, and do they still? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, George?
Thank you, Mayor. In the meeting packet tonight, on the left side, you'll notice there's two or three letters here to the council on this issue and another issue. And I took a look at those, and our last speaker here, Marion, she wrote a letter here. And what I'm concerned about oftentimes is when people, when members of the public or business people here send in letters, they're not acknowledged by the city council. You'll go through your entire discussion, you'll ignore these letters, staff will ignore them. The least you can do is read the letters and acknowledge that the citizens actually took the time to address their body politic, but then you had the nerve to ask the woman to come up and speak for herself when maybe she did not want to. She had given you a letter. She had given you a letter, okay? And you didn't acknowledge it, and I want to thank her for coming up and at least embellishing the fact that she has some other issues to bring your attention. But, you know, I find this kind of baffling, that people will go to the trouble to send you a letter that you don't acknowledge it. And I'll tell you, over the last 20 years, I've written a lot of letters and a lot of emails to the city of Kattati, and I've never seen them inside the packet before, let alone a response once in a while. Even when the city was under the management of Dale Chaddick and City Manager Terry Stubings and City Manager Diane Thompson, a lot of times my emails, my letters were not printed like they are here, let alone addressed. And when I was on the city council in 2009, one of the first things I brought up to the city is that I'm hearing all these complaints from members of the public that they've written complaints and had concerns, written complaints to the city council, and I was not privy to them. I couldn't find them. And when I went to the city manager and said, "I'd like to read the complaint letters and not just the thank you letters," Diane Thompson says, "George, you're not, you're not allowed to see those. Those are for me." I brought it up to the city council, I said, "Why aren't we seeing the complaint letters? Why are we just seeing the thank you letters?" And I never got any answer. So I hope we begin a practice of putting everybody's email, it sends an email to the city, or to you personally, on an issue on the agenda, and you put it in the packet so we can share it, and then also address it. These people pay taxes. They raise their families here, they own homes, they own businesses. Need a little self-respect. I want to thank Marion and Lillian for being here tonight and bringing your concerns forward.
Thank you for your comments. Lillian, did you want to speak on this item?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
When I tried to get service, garbage service, I called up and I talked to a woman, and she would not quote me a rate. And I had to speak to somebody that I would call a closer, somebody that got on the phone and, just like a used car salesman have, they have, or car salesman, they have closers. And I asked for small garbage cans, and they said they didn't have any. I had to buy, I had to rent large containers. And I had just seen small containers or medium-sized containers. And he also told me that I had to open up an account and pay for it. Now, I used to be a bookkeeper for a long, long time, and I never told a customer that they had to pay money to open up...
they had to pay money to open up an account. Now, this is a mandated service from the city of Cotati, and that gives them just a wide option to charge us for what they want to. That's one complaint. I never did, he said he would wipe that off my bill. He never did. He sent me to collection and took my big, large garbage cans away. I can't push those huge cans across the street. There are a lot of people everywhere. They're old, they're crippled, they're infirm, and they cannot push those garbage cans across the street. They have never got a street sweeper into Countryside Memorial Park. What else can I say? They're just indifferent to the public. I talked to some of the women that answer the phone, and they kind of say, yeah, that's true, but you have to talk to the big guy that gives out the prices. You have mandated the service and allowed them to take advantage of the city citizens here. And I think it should be looked into, or their service should be looked into. They leave all kinds of junk, like cement, big blocks of cement when they leave. Now, I'll tell you how I sell, I take care of my garbage. I export it to the city of Modesto. My nephew, who comes over once a week, takes my garbage and puts it in his garbage can in Modesto. Now, there are a lot of people that don't have hardly any garbage, and they share a garbage can. Now, we're supposed to each have a garbage can. Why the heck do we have to do if we have one little bag of garbage? That's, that's rude, that's indifferent, and service-wise, it's pretty poor policy, as far as I'm concerned. So I think their performance certainly could look, be checked. Yes, they do get garbage, the clippings, yes, they do compost it. Yes, I spent five to 10 years complaining about methane that came off there, and I finally got them to ship the methane down to Petaluma. It took me a long time, and I was almost blackmailed about complaining about it. So it really looks, the performance of them, their garbage company, needs to really be examined. Thank you, I'm over my time limit.
Thank you, Lillian. Anyone else? Eric?
I'd like to thank you, Mayor. You brought up a number of things that I would have forgotten about. The age of some of the bins are, I dare say, as old as Ms. Kilman. They should be replaced, they should be upgraded, they should at least be painted and maintained. The same garbage sitting on the bottom of a bin for 30-plus years is not appropriate. In terms of the street sweeping, doesn't happen, simple as that. It goes down certain streets, and I'm not going to say they don't go down certain streets, but other streets, they don't know that they're on the map. An issue that concerns me as a consumer, I called to get landscaping, a bin, so I could recycle landscaping. Not landscaping with Roundup, simple landscaping. And I was told, you're a commercial account. I'm a commercial account that handles 20 families. It's more effective to use that. We have a recycling bin, so we can divert some things, but why can't we divert landscape waste? It's ridiculous for me to take the landscaping and put it in the garbage. That's what diversion is about. And simply be told, oh, well, we just, we don't give you a bin because you're a commercial account, that's not appropriate. They should be told that in an apartment setting, certainly, that we should have a bin, at least the size of a household, and that would be something to suggest strongly to them in contract. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seen none, I will close public comment. I can hit on a couple of these things. The selling of compost was not done by Redwood Empire Disposal, it actually was done by Sonoma Compost. That site had to be closed because of environmental issues. Unfortunately, for the short term, all of our green waste is being shipped out of Sonoma County. At some point, we will be looking to bring that back, so that compost which people desire will be made available again, but that really isn't under the purview of Redwood Empire Disposal. As far as the capturing of the fumes, that really is the landfill itself. Redwood Empire Disposal just does the pickup of the garbage, and they bring it to the landfill. And there is still gases coming off landfill. I believe they come off, I forget for how many years, but I want to say, you know, 30-plus years. So yes, there is still methane gas coming off of our landfill, and they are actually using it, oh, my mind is failing me, they, they actually are reusing it at the county, and I can't remember for what.
Yeah, I believe it's for joint generators.
Okay, for generators, so they are reusing that. I knew they were, so they don't sell it, and that, again, is not Redwood Empire. So as far as Marion, Marion had written a card that she wanted to speak on this item, so I just wanted to give her the opportunity. Yes, we did get a letter from her, but she also came and filled out a card. I just wanted to be sure, she might have had something to add, so. Let's see, Lillian's comment about the service, that's sort of why, when they came to us for a rate increase, we wanted to look at what their performance is. We, we want to know, understand where their shortcomings are, and so that's exactly why this is before us. And in fact, they are the ones that have to pay for that, that's part of the contract, so the city doesn't pay for this performance review. Redwood Empire has to pay for that. But before we look at any rates, we want to see, you know, are they meeting the service that they signed up for? Eric, I brought up about the bins, I mean, I wish there was a better way. I can't believe that as they're driving around, they don't see bins without lids or big cracks in them or whatever. There ought to be, you know, a better way, you know, a better way to handle that. And I would like us to look into, Damian, about the landscaping bins for commercial. I, I agree, that seems a little odd to me, that they would expect everything to go in the landfill. We really are trying to divert things, so it seems to me that something could be done. And so, did I miss anything on that? I think I was able to...
No, I think I got it.
Okay. Comments? Yes?
So I appreciate the comments we heard about concerns people are having personally, and I certainly reiterated several of those from my experience at our last meeting, when the representatives from Red were here. And all of that information, I think, really will go into whatever survey is developed, because these are the kinds of questions we need to hear, you know, based on what we have in the agreement and how specific we were of services we wanted and the regularity of those services. If they're not meeting those, it's going to be pretty difficult for them to come with a straight face and ask for some kind of an increase. But that'll be a decision that they will have to make, and that we eventually would approve or not approve. So, again, tonight, it was great to hear those, those comments, because I think that gives us more information, but what we're going to do, potentially, is just approve or not approve, getting this study done, and the fact that Redwood Empire will be paying for this study and not the city as well. Thank you.
And, and a couple, a couple other things I forgot. One, can we look into, I wasn't aware that there is a charge for opening an account. I don't recall having to do that. If you could also check on that. And there are 20-gallon cans, so that is a little concerning, because I know that they have the smaller cans. And they quite openly talked about it when they were here last week, about really trying to move people down to the smallest possible. So I think we should find out a little bit more about that, because that would concern me with them trying to push people into a bigger can, when they're supposed to be pushing people into a smaller can. So, and if I, I could just briefly comment, too, just as a comparative, at the condominium complex where I live, we do have a yard waste, it's a smaller bin than the recyclable bin and the garbage bin, but we do have that available, so it seems odd that they would do it one way in one location, so it would be good to get that information from them about being consistent. Okay, with that...
Are you looking for a measure, a motion, Madam Mayor?
A measure, a motion would be nice.
I'll give you the measure of a motion, and recommend that we adopt a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with R3 to conduct a performance review of Redwood Empire Disposal. Second that?
On paper? Aye. So let the record show that that is a 4-0 with one abstention. And with that, I would like to take a five-minute break, and then we can get Mr. Moore back, We have the whole council back, including Mr. Moore, and so we can move on to Item 11D, which is professional service agreement with the Reed Group for preparation of a water and sewer rate study. Mr. Scott's back.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Yes, tonight's item is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bob Reed, the Reed Group Incorporated, for preparation of the sewer and water rate study. The outline is generally to discuss, briefly go over the purpose and need for the rate study update, talk about the rate, utility rate consultants' experience, scope of services, optional scope items, and then financial considerations before wrapping up. The purpose and need, the city owns and operates water and sewer utilities, and under state law is, is allowed to adjust its rates to cover its expenses. The thing is, with, with Proposition 218, those, we have to put justification together to show exactly, to justify those rates. And typically, typically, these studies are done every two to four years, and include a five-year rate model to have our projected operation expenses, and then the capital plan is worked into that as well, and to, to ensure that the rates then cover our projected expenses. The current rate model for the water and sewer utilities, or we also call them enterprise funds, was prepared in early, in February of 2013, in fact, and so we're pushing up against the four-year upper range of that update period. Now, the Reed Group Incorporated would be, this would be the first time this company would prepare for us, and so I think the experience this firm brings is compelling. He's got 26 years of experience putting rate studies together for water and sewer utilities. He's not just a finance company, he, there's a lot of uniqueness to utilities and what drives rates and the variations and demands and infrastructure needs and so forth. So it's all very relevant, and then rate structures, of course, are constantly changing in the droughts and everything else, all these unique circumstances. The Reed Group has completed rate studies for neighboring cities. We've got Santa Rosa, Roner Park, Healdsburg, Petaluma, city of St. Helena, Cloverdale, and Windsor. And like I said, they've got, he's got experience with regional issues that impact rates. The scope of the services, okay, just moving along then, the proposal is attached, and, but just an overview of the scope of services, we'll have a multi-year financial plan model to reflect operations, capital, and debt obligations, typically for five years. And the cost of service analysis is included, which follows the Prop 218 requirements. So we'd get this cost of service analysis and check, 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 all the requirements of, of the law. And in there, 2A, which you can, it's in the shaded, screened text up there, wasn't meant to be screened, but it just came, came out that way. I've got optional as, to complete an analysis to justify keeping the tiered rates. Now, this used to be a no-brainer to have tiered rates, but in 2014, San Juan Capistrano was sued, and the loss, the judgment there was that tiered rates needed to have pretty thorough, thorough justification that different water source, that the increased water demand caused the agency to go and tap into more expensive water supplies to cause, you know, justify, imposing the higher tiers. So there's some work there, and there's some risk in keeping the tiered rates. That's why I put it as optional. Third, there's a water shortage financial analysis, so the impact of droughts and how to stabilize rates with a rate structure for water shortage rates. So this is a way to offset the loss of revenue during droughts, is to have, there's lots of ways to do it. One way that, that's been used is to have different rate structures based on the water shortage. You've got a stage one, stage two, stage three, they have a respective water shortage, water rate, rates associated with that. So as you go up, down through those stages, it would change, and it would be off, the, the revenue shortfall from lower demands meeting, meeting the 10% or 20% water reductions would be partly met by the, these rate stages and partly from reserves. So it's, and then, so that's what's, what's thought about there. Santa Rosa has that rate structure in place. We wouldn't be the first ones to do it, and this, this company did that for Santa Rosa. Task five, evaluate automatic annual water and sewer rate adjustments. So these are, you've got the five-year model, and, which is kind of stuck in time, but there's inflation indices that this could be potentially tied to. So it doesn't have to go back, it just gets automatically tied to that index. And then there's this, what we already do today, is we have the Sonoma County Water Agency rate increases passed through, and we, we did that last year, and it's coming up here in the next few months. And then finally, prepare a financial plan and rates update study. The, the schedule would be to have this be prepared, the staff needs to provide the consultant with, with data on, on its customers, its water use, its revenues, its budget, so forth. And then we'd be coming back in June or July timeframe with a public hearing, and potentially a rate adjustment in August. Okay, so if we turn, turn to the optional scope items, what I'm calling optional, is that, and partly, the, the need for this is that we have $30,000 budgeted for this, and this rate study's coming in at $49,000, and that's split between the two utilities. So there's some amount coming extra from unappropriated fund balance from, from each of those, those funds. So one way to reduce the cost is to not include, just to go from a three-tier system to a one-block rate, and that would reduce the fee by $5,500. And two things it accomplishes, it, it reduces the risk... And two things it accomplishes, it reduces the risk that we have of lawsuits for, you know, we could provide that justification and still not win out on, the justification couldn't be, might not still be strong enough to justify three tiers. We might not necessarily get three tiers, it would be a different structure. To mitigate that, we could use our investment in this Water Smart software that we have with these automatic meters, which gives signals back to the customer how they're doing and with real-time water use data. But they're not going to get the price signals back that they get with the tiers. Oh, I should mention there, and there is some discussion in the staff report, you might be interested, neighboring cities and cities in the state have taken the whole gamut of spectrum of approaches to this. Some that have had the tiered water systems, for example, Town of Windsor, Santa Rosa, Runer Park, Lodi, they've maintained it. They've gone through this process, justified it, and maintained their tiered water rates. The list, Cloverdale, Roseville, San Juan Water District, Carmichael Water District, Amador Water Agency, they've decided to eliminate their tiered rates. And then the City of Healdsburg has maintained their single, they've always had a single block and just decided to stay with that. That's just kind of an overview. Others, clients, Ukiah, Plymouth, Oakwood, Lake Water District, they've always had, they're like Healdsburg is, always had a uniform water rate structure. So there's examples of all the different approaches. The other optional item is the water shortage rates. If we decide, hey, we'll just make it work with our revenues during water shortages and try to get by, then we could delete task four of having, considering a different water rate changing per stage of the water shortage. Okay. So financial considerations, we just talked about some of those options. As is, it's a $49,000 contract. $49,250. $14,000, $14,250 would come from, would be additional appropriation from the water fund, from their unappropriated balance, or unappropriated balance. $5,225 would be needing to come from additional water fund, unappropriated balance. That's if it's all intact, we take the entire proposal as it is. The next slide sort of summarizes what some of the options would be. The one, the first one being staff's recommendation, just as is package deal. Second option, go to a one-rate block, drop the $5,500 justification for keeping the tiers. Number three, just drop the water shortage rate structure. And number four, delete 2A and 4, just do a basic rate study update. And so those are the options out there. I did talk with Norm Veloso, our Finance Administration Manager. He said that the fund balances can support the first option. So. So again, just wrapping up, what's before tonight is the action of considering adopting a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Reed Group for an amount not to exceed $49,250 for preparation of the water and sewer rate study and authorize budget amendments in the water and sewer funds. At this time, I'd be happy to respond to questions.
Questions? Questions? Yes?
Looking at optional items, see, water shortage rules. And see, it's very prudent to ask your question in a previous item because that way it ensures you get it answered during the staff report. I think that's very clever. I'm very pleased about that. What I wanted to ask you, Mr. Scott, I just want to make clear, what this is looking at, in my understanding, this is described or designed to kind of maintain a base level of operation for the nuts and bolts, providing water in the case of a water shortage impacting costs. This is designed as a profit-making mechanism, the ability to adjust rates to moderate shortages according to water shortage stage?
Correct. Prop 218 is there as a safeguard to prevent, I mean, we're not a private company corporation. And so we are just allowed to bring in revenues to cover our expenses, period, no profit.
I think it sounds like the protections are there. It seems very important to me that it be designed. I could see the need for something like this, but from a consumer perspective, I'd want to be very certain that it was designed only for maintaining that base level in an emergency situation. So thank you for explaining that for me.
So this particular review, as it's outlined, it seems like it's much more in-depth than ones that we've had before. It provides a lot more, it's probably not the right terminology, but more data modeling to kind of really look at our data and kind of really give us multiple scenarios of possibilities for what we can do, rather than just looking at, you know, just generic, as you put it, I think, financial data.
It's very niche specialty. It's a very niche area. And that's correct. I mean, that's a good characterization. The laws are constantly changing and there's, it's very constrained what you're allowed to do, to stabilize rates or provide an incentive for customers to save water and reduce waste, et cetera. So this is what this person's been doing for 26 years.
And you bring up a good point about encouraging people to save water. It appears that that is not something that you can just put into your rates just to encourage that behavior, although we've had plenty of people come before us and say, oh, well, I can serve and, you know, I think you should charge others more because I'm, you know, doing everything I can, but others aren't. But it sounds like the laws don't allow you to just, and I hate to use this word, but I'm going to use it arbitrarily, you know, try and encourage that behavior without real data and facts behind having those rates to justify charging those rates. Is that correct?
Correct. There's very elaborate justification provided in the study to show the nexus between our expenses and the rate that we're imposing, charging.
And that was basically the basis of the lawsuit was to provide that nexus to make sure that the rates were being charged based upon, you know, what it was actually costing?
Well, Prop 218 is always, was in place before that to provide that nexus. And I think this is what, you've touched upon before in your comment, was that that specifically looked at making that connection between rates with the tiered rates where the cost per quantity of water went up, the more water you used. And they found that you had to show that the cost of providing your water went up with that additional water use. And not all cities had that justification, that that wasn't a prior requirement. So that was what was new with that decision.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, interesting, I'll just expand upon that a little bit is that for years and years, you know, since Prop 218, all these public water utilities and municipal providers would provide conservation tiering for their rates, and that was common practice, totally permissible. And then the net, sort of net operating cost, like Craig spoke to really earlier, you know, these, with a public utility, you don't generate profits. You just cover your operating and capital expenses. And as long as you could show that the rate structure with your conservation rate tiers covered in aggregate, your operation, you know, kind of net operation and capital costs, that was permissible and had been permissible for years. And so the law didn't change. What changed was the court case, which, when it came out, it was like the sky was falling for all the water districts, you know. It was a huge decision and sent everyone scrambling.
When was that decision?
2014.
After our most recent rate study of 2013? I do have another question if I may.
Okay, sure.
On our rate study of 2013, was that done by the Reed Group?
No, it was another firm, Bertles and Wells, Bertles Wells.
And we're going with the Reed Group because they are more specialized in this type of study?
Correct. And they've done work for cities in our area. And it's very specialized and they just have a really good track record.
Do they have any competition in that niche market?
Yes, the prior firm that we had used, that the city used in 2013, yes.
And did we, do you know if we reached out to them for a request?
I, we did not.
I will say that the prior rate study was, the cost was very similar. So I think it was the, I know it was the determination that, you know, a couple of years later, with more work, it's probably not, you won't probably save any money. It's just, the decision was based on expertise and their success, especially post Prop or post San Juan Capistrano, successfully working on these kind of rate studies.
And Prop 218 requires us to do this every three years?
No, it, it's implied because these, the numbers get stale and get old and less and less relevant. And so you do have to keep it current so that, you know, with changing costs, you've got to continue to show that nexus. So it just implies that you need to update these. And we've had the drought and it's really difficult to prognose what our water supply condition is going to be next, even just next year. And that has a huge and big influence on our rates.
Thank you.
Since we had other cities that have used them locally, have we checked with them to make sure that they were satisfied with the work?
Yes, yes, I've gone and the, Santa Rosa, Cloverdale, Windsor, they all highly recommend this firm.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Open it up for public comment. Seeing none, return it back to the council. Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes?
I forgot to mention a public comment that we had prior to the meeting.
Yes.
And it was a written email. It addressed gray water systems and is there a way we can incorporate a potential program to incentivize gray water systems in the rate study? And we had a conversation on this. And it's almost a separate study outside of this to look at what would financially make sense. I mean, in the city, we may have one, maybe two gray water systems, the City of Cotati. And the one that I know about has, was $2,000 at least to install. And you do get money back from reduced water bills and sort of work that into a reduced sewer bill is what this question was about and to try to make it more cost-effective. So that's certainly a study that can happen at any time, independent of this. I will ask the rate consultant if there's some, you know, value in incorporating that in this study. So I had offered that.
I would think that if this is their specialty, you know, certainly other cities that are larger than ours and are moving in those directions, they might have some insight into that, just on a more general perspective. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm satisfied, at least personally, with the need, the time, timing at least, for this study. Satisfied also with the selection, especially given the fact that the market seems to be rather small and not with a lot of price differential and also with the good referrals and local work. That works for me. I guess the only question I see remaining is, is it worth paying about 8K extra for A, option A, and option four? And, you know, both these options tend to do with potential for the supply of water being variable. One is to take a look at keeping a tiered water rate, because even though we have a lot of tools, that's the best way to have downward pressure, because some people are just immune to the natural pressures to conserve. And this is a good way to do it that does work. So it strikes me there's some value there. And if you take a look at the other, basically for water shortage rates, this is again to make sure that the machinery that we all depend on keep running in case of a very severe drought. And both of these things, it occurs to me, if I live somewhere else in the country, I might not be willing to spend even that small amount extra. But if I take a look at the variability of water that we have, particularly in this state, compared to really much of the rest of the country, I think it would be more imprudent, at least we're talking under $9,000, not to include those. I think this is the type of thing, looking at the last week or so, we're not thinking about drought right now, but you know, I just have the feeling we'll be back there again. So if my first take at least is, I'd be supportive of keeping those two options in.
What do others think generally about? Yes?
That would agree exactly with what the Vice Mayor just stated. I think it's a small cost to get that information. I personally would be one who would be really unhappy if we had one rate for somebody who's conserved for 35-ish years in this city, you know, just, and the efforts that many people have made to conserve water and it's the State Water Resources Control Board, not the regional water, the State Water Board today came out and said that there still will be measures in place for drought-type situations. It won't be the mandatory stuff. And there's no reason, you know, we shouldn't be wasting it. It's that simple. You know, if you have a need and you need to use it, so be it. But you really, you know, we really shouldn't be wasting any resources. And this is a critical one that's, it's going to, it's the new gold in California. So I would very much be in favor of option 2A and 4, both to be included in this study.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, at first I was looking at the, with some hesitance at the tiered group because of the lawsuit, but I think it would be good at least to include that so that we can maintain what we've been doing. But at least, at this point, we're not approving any of the rate changes. It's just the study looking into it. So I think it's good to invest in getting all the information that we can.
I would probably support the more in-depth study. I would love to see a comparison of the 2013 versus the 2017 study and see what that looks like and really how much more that is, how much more in-depth. So maybe, you know, at the conclusion of the study, that would be great.
And I would concur. I think, you know, having more information is better. And we may do that additional parts this time, but it might tell us a lot so that we learn and we may not have to do it again. For instance, you know, the tiered one, it might tell us that, you know, no way, you know, there's no way you can justify that, but it's data and information that we wouldn't have if we didn't get the report done. And I agree with you as far as we never know how much rain we're going to get. So we could very well be right back where we were a couple of years ago, trying to have enough water, so.
With that, if you're looking for a motion?
I am looking.
I thought it might be that time. I'd like to move, we authorize the city manager to execute professional service agreement for the amount of $49,250 with the Reed Group Incorporated for preparation of a water and sewer rate study and authorize budget amendments to allocate $14,025 and $5,225 additional funds from the Unappropriate Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds respectively for this study.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a five-vote vote. And with that, we can move on. And with that, we can move on. We are down to correspondence and pending legislation, which we did not have any. And then we can move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, our favorite part of the meeting, I'm sure. So I have a couple of things to report tonight. This is just a thing that might be interesting to some of you. Fellow by the name of Scott Mason will be joining us for part of a day here at the city in early February. And he's from the California-Australia Exchange Program run by the League of California Cities. And he's the, what they call the CEO of the Central Highlands Regional Council in Queensland, Brisbane, I think is how they say it, right? And so he'd be akin to a county administrator in Australia. And he's visiting most cities in Sonoma County and spending part of a day working with staff to see how they operate and to exchange ideas. So they, the League of California Cities runs a program where they send, you know, a California manager over to Australia, out to the outback and run them around. And then they do the same with an Australian manager of some public agency down there. And so Scott Mason is the guy this year from Australia. And he's going to be, like I said, hitting all the cities in Sonoma County, spending part of the day, you know, in the departments and, you know, just seeing how California cities run. And it'll be an interesting contrast to see how they do it in Australia versus, you know, how it's done here. So that'll be early February. Just an update on the Toys for Tots program. Each year, as you know, the city partners with Rotary Clubs of Renter Park Katati and the Rotary Club of Rancho Katati, the Rancho Adobe Fire District and the Renter Park Reelers Association to collect and deliver toys to children during the holidays. And this year, the program brought gifts to one hundred and thirty-nine children and sixty families, as well as providing gifts to Saint Vincent de Paul, their dining outreach program, Neighbors Organized Against Hunger, which is otherwise known as NOAA, Catholic Charities and the Family Justice Center. So just a continuation of an annual program. And Santa gets a police escort when he goes to these houses. So it's, anyway, it's, it's a good event. Just an update on the Safe Parking Program, just to let you know, Catholic Charities reports that things are going great with the program and they see consistent usage of the site. And Catholic Charities tells us that the participants are very happy with the site. So, so far, so good out there. Workshops, we have a monthly volunteer workshop coming up at Pocket Park this Friday, January twenty-seventh, from two to four P.M. And this program offers the chance to get to know neighbors more closely, learn the hidden secrets of the Pocket Park, what's termed Food Forest, all the food plants. And so, so they're also, we're going to work on the Annex too. So the Annex Extension, which is the new area across the bridge from Pocket Park. And again, that's this Friday, January twenty-seventh, from two to four P.M. The city put in a preliminary application for what's termed the Obag Two, One Barrier Grant Program for repaving East Katati between the railroad tracks and the city limits by Sunflower Park, Combeville Farms, that whole area, as well as dealing with some of the, the tree and landscape issues there on East Katati and the Center Medium. We applied for three-quarters of a million dollars for that work. And it's a competitive application process. It goes to all the cities in the county and S C T A reviews all the applications. And there's never enough federal funds for all the project name. So then it comes down to picking which projects get funded and get funded at what level. So that's, that's starting the process now. And it's going to be going through, like I said, selection from a technical committee and it'll eventually go to the, the S C T A Board for approval. And this council will see it again. If, if the city has granted some, some federal funds for that roadwork, then it'll come back to the city where the city can officially take action on that. So that might be coming in the future. Recreation news, there is, so you may have noticed, there's new artwork up in the halls over on that hall. And that's from Thomas Page Academy from Miss Miller and Miss Gillerin's, sorry, fifth grade classrooms. And the medium is oil pastel pencil and, pencil and construction paper. And the exhibit is titled Simply Persimmons. So I think the artist may be having a, you know, an exhibit and showing there if you want to get autographs. I can let you know when that might be. And then on January nineteenth, we, we did hold a free theater workshop for children's eight and up to introduce them to our spring show, Shrek Junior. And we had thirty-three participants at that workshop, which was a great turnout here at the community center. This coming Saturday, January twenty-eighth, we'll host a free theater workshop in the Mountain Room for children's, children ages five to seven to introduce them to the spring show, The Wizard of Oz, so for the younger age groups. And then on Wednesday, January eighteenth, we started our Free Zumba Gold Class through the Santa Rosa J.C. in the Katati Room, and we had twelve participants. We hope to see that number grow as the rain slows down and people learn about the class. This first session will run through May twenty-fourth, and then summer classes will begin in June. And on February sixth, there will be a free travel presentation in the Katati Room at one-thirty to showcase our upcoming two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen trips and tours, including a trip to Switzerland, Britain, Ireland, Costa Rica, and maybe more, I think, safe countries. So then finally, we'll hold our Camp Katati Spring Break camp from March twentieth to twenty-fourth. And it's, again, like our other camps that we held over the winter time, is to provide care for children while school is closed, but the families still have to work. And the theme this year, or the theme at this camp is Animal Planet. So the campers will get to learn about different animals from all over the world, with their games, crafts and other activities. And, and I think that's pretty much it. And be happy to answer any questions.
I had just had a couple of quick questions on the Safe Parking. Did they say how many participants are there currently?
You know, they, so when I reached out to them and asked them, they didn't say. But I think it varies from night to night.
Right.
So I don't know. I don't know if it's all ten or if it's something less than that in some nights.
And then on the Pocket Park, the Food Forest, did they flyer the neighborhood on that? Because we've had this issue with them multiple times.
Yeah, so if you haven't received a flyer, then the answer's probably no. And I can reach out to them and make sure they do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to Catholic Charities and the Safe Parking Program. I'm glad to hear that's underway. It's very good timing because it's been rather cold and certainly rather wet, too. I, I just want to, and I think I understand how this works, but I just wanted to clarify. So Catholic Charities is essentially the point person, or the coordinator, if you will, for this program between the city and, and the people who use that program. So basically, they'd be the ones to have a sense of how things are working out, if there were concerns or issue. Are they, they kind of fill that role? Would I be understanding that correctly?
That's correct. They're there multiple times every night.
Okay, good. And so they're, I'm glad to hear they're reporting that people are happy with the location and things are working out well. Did I hear that correctly?
That's what they tell me.
Good, good to hear that. I know that when we discussed this, obviously, there were a lot of things that went into the consideration of this location. And there was a concern, although it worked in a lot of levels, we wanted to see in practice if it would actually function. So I'm glad to hear it is, and I'm glad to hear it got going before the storm. So that's good timing. And glad to see, even if we don't get all ten filled every single night, seeing as that's such a large number for a small city, I think we can all take some solace in knowing that we're doing a pretty good job with that. So thank you, Mr. Ovid, glad to hear that.
With that, we can move on to council member reports.
I have nothing to report out this meeting, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Next?
Next.
So I didn't attend, but I called in for the Health Action City Council Liaison Ad Hoc Committee in early January. And a number of issues were discussed at that meeting, not to go into too much detail. I was pleased to hear it's the Year of the Senior. I'm not sure if I qualify for that, but I, I'm going to take advantage of it somehow.
I think so.
Close it. Okay, it didn't, I hope your microphone was off on that one, Mayor. But the, the big, the biggest topic was really going over what they were calling Age Friendly Communities. And there was, there was, it was a long presentation. There wasn't a lot of discussion, but a long presentation. But then we also had the County Health Officer, Dr. Millman, talk about medical cannabis, environmental health permit ordinance. And one of the things that I, I kind of had mentioned earlier is the Department of Health Services can help the cities manage the regulation of local permitting for, for the cities. And I know that Santa Rosa, Sebastopol and Cloverdale have already taken advantage of it. So I don't know if they've reached out to us yet. If, if they haven't, let me know and I can certainly pass on the contact info. There's a couple of folks to contact there, so. And just to double check, I thought when we went through the whole list of committees and liaisons, that you were not going to be attending this group anymore?
I think what you said you'd do was the quarterly meetings. But if you would like to do this meeting, you'd...
Well, then, then let's, I'll just...
I was just not available that...
Yeah, yeah, I know you weren't available that day, so. But I just want to check in with you so I'm not stepping on toes. And then this Thursday will be a very long Ag and Open Space meeting. We have the four o'clock Subcommittee Meeting on Agriculture. And then from five to five-thirty, there's no way you can have a meeting that short, but we'll find out if we can. Will be a very brief Ag and Open Space. Then we're going to have a joint meeting with the Fiscal Oversight Commission from five-thirty to seven. So it'll kind of be three meetings back to back. And I'll report out on that next time. Thank you.
Tom?
I don't have anything new to report other than I am going to reiterate that we do have our annual Chamber of Commerce Recognition Dinner Saturday on a Las Vegas theme, so there may be Wayne Newton look-alikes. And you were talking about the Ag and Open Space meeting, a long meeting. I have to go to Fortuna for three days for the Remath Annual Board Meeting. So I win. So I'll report on that, I'll, next time. Report out on that next time.
Well, I, next time I complain about a long drive, I won't complain about spending three weeks and three days in Fortuna, I don't think. So the only thing I wanted to touch base again on, we did have our, through the RWA, our fourth annual Russian River Friendly Landscaping Event. I got to open it up, the introductory speaker of it is the Russian River Watershed Association Chair. And I just wanted to bring it up because it's kind of interesting to see how it's really grown in just four short years. We were talking earlier about the change and how we approach this stuff. The landscaping community, both from the design level down to the installation, working level, really show a pretty strong interest. You know, where this is held in the Santa Rosa room, we have the WAC meetings, very, very large facility, and they managed to fill it up every single time. We didn't have that many spare seats this morning. So I, I think it's good to see that interest, mostly because with that sort of help from that community, it kind of helps all of us in the cities meet the goals we're required to meet now. So if you think of the goals that are coming down the line for all of us to reach in terms of impacts on the watershed, the involvement of this particular sector is really, I think, a good development. So that's good news for all of us.
That's it?
And that's my report for this time.
All righty, I'll have a couple of things. One, I attended the State of the County address on the twelfth. It was a very interesting talk. They had a gentleman, and I can't remember his name, from UCLA. And he was talking about economic growth and what we can do. And it was interesting because he talked about ways to change GDP. And he said that there's really only three ways to change GDP. You can change the labor force, you can change capital, or you can change technology. And generally speaking, most change happens when you change the labor force. And that will get pretty interesting because with the economy, the way it's changed, a lot of people are back to work. And there's different ways of looking at the employment, whether, how much more employed or not employed, who's, you know, out of the workforce. So they look at it a few different ways, not just one way. But generally speaking, there is a lot already employed. And in particular, you know, when you get down in the range of four percent, where a lot of places are, it's not everywhere, but a lot of places are, you really don't have more labor force. So even if you create more jobs, who's going to, who's going to do, do them? Because, you know, there's already, people are already employed. So that ought to get interesting, they said. So we'll see kind of where that goes. In Sonoma County, you know, the things that might help us are things like building. You know, we're starting to see more building. But as pointed out, they're having a hard time getting skilled folks to be able to help with that building. So there'll be, you know, a little bit of pull there to try and get that. And Sonoma County is actually doing better than a lot of, a lot of the areas. In particular, because we're really, the quality of life here is what people like here, is, is the quality of life. So because we're at full employment in Sonoma County, it does make it harder to go, grow. So that's why we're just seeing a two percent growth rate, which for a place that already has full employment, that's not bad. You know, it would be nice to have it be more, but you can only do so much. And part of the problem with getting more people in really has a lot to do with the housing prices. So while the quality of life is, is good here, the price of housing and rents and stuff are going to keep more people from coming to Sonoma County. So there's lots of things, you know, that can happen. So we'll have to wait and see. But generally speaking, it was very interesting, he had some very interesting graphics. So, so that was interesting. They did bring up Supervisor Zane brought up that this is the Year of the Senior. So that means that a lot of their programs will be focusing on that. The other thing I went to on the twelfth was the Sonoma County City Selection, the special meeting for the, the seat for the Coastal Commission. That was a very, very interesting meeting, needless to say. So what we ultimately ended up doing is putting both Chris Rogers and Sarah Gurney forth. And apparently, that's fine for us to do. We'll see what the supervisors do with that. But what one of the, the representative from Sebastopol was saying is that the more people we can get in front of the people making the decisions, the better off we are for Sonoma County. So it's not a bad thing that, that we're putting two, two people forward. It's actually a good thing. And both candidates are highly qualified. So we'll see where that goes with the, with the board supervisors. But there was a lot of discussion about, you know, kind of how this plays out. And a side note, it sounded like there was already some talk that someone from San Francisco may get it anyways, so, but anyways. So we put both names forward, just so you know there. Yeah, the interesting part in that is that Santa Rosa got kind of hung up and they didn't get it before their council. So because they didn't get it before their council, and originally there was one people, person, and there ended up being three people, they actually didn't get to discuss it and send forth. So basically, Santa Rosa had to recuse itself.
So it was a split vote?
So it was a split vote, and we went through a couple of different, you know, iterations. And then, you know, a person with much more knowledge than I said, you know, there's no reason we can't put both names forward, and, and we should. And so, as we did. So that's how that went. But yeah, it was a little, and they tried to talk Santa Rosa into voting on the second and third round. And they, you know, didn't, they didn't want to do that, so. And they couldn't get ahold of their city attorney. So anyways, that's how that went down.
I wouldn't want to be called either if I was their city attorney.
Yeah, yeah.
Not for a while.
Yeah. And I went to the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. And the, Brian Vaughn from the Department of Health came and talked about the Sonoma County Safe Medicine Disposal Program. I know we've had presentations here on it before, we're getting closer and closer. So the, they will be working with county staff and the city staffs to determine the best approach for presenting this ordinance for city councils. So more... So more will be coming on that, but a lot of questions on, you know, what we can and can't do, and, you know, ways to handle the legality of that. So it was a very interesting, it was very interesting discussion. So that's all I have to report. Let's see. So we will move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. George, did you?
You can call me councilman. I call you mayor. We'll get off to a good start. I'd like to comment on the city manager's report briefly, and another item on future agenda items. Damian, our city manager, referred to the Safe Parking Project. And in answering, trying to answer your questions, Damian said, "I really don't know how many cars are parked out there," and so forth, and there was a nice exchange about that. But I would like to suggest, if you want to know how many cars are parked down there, is, I mean, I've been by there many, many times and seen maybe one car or no cars there, is maybe ask one of our police officers who's working late at night to run by there and take a quick snapshot for you and forward it to the police chief and have him email you out a photograph of how many cars out there, and maybe keep a record of how many cars are out there each night, so you can judge the success or failure of this program, and maybe even look at this, see if the camera can pick up the frost on the cars as well. On the other note of a possible future agenda item, I'd like to see you maybe place on the future agenda this issue of speaker cards. It's been an issue of mine for some time, and it reminded me again tonight that we've had, we have some citizens that have come forward with speaker cards in order to try to speak, merely to try to find out if their letters to the city council have been acknowledged or been, or will be read during the meeting, or whether, you know, they're taken seriously or not. I think that's kind of a misuse of the speaker card. That's not really what it was designed for, but I'm seeing some people are using it that way, because they're not really sure whether their concerns are gonna be addressed if they formally email you or send you a letter, so they're coming forward. The other thing I'd like to see you put on the agenda is this issue of the front page of our agenda every night. A few years ago, when Tammy Taylor was a clerk, our city clerk here, she began either making up housekeeping rules, or Diane Thompson was making up housekeeping rules, and she started reading these housekeeping rules every night. And it was really interesting, because they were changing month to month. They were kind of taking on a new flavor as the months went on, and I would complain that, "Look, this is getting ridiculous. Why don't you just place them on a piece of paper? Save us a lot of time." And Councilmember DeLloso at the time says, "Well, George, you know, that's not very environmentally friendly. If you're really into saving paper, I think this is a better use of our time, is just to have it read." Well, for three years, I was arguing that it was not a good idea, and it was wasting time and resources, and that you people have never voted on any housekeeping rules for three years. And then finally, you came up with some new rules of decorum, and you passed them, and decided to codify them. So now we're using paper now against Mr. DeLloso's wishes to do exactly what I asked the council to do. Spell it out, stop wasting time, and so forth, and I think it'd be good to review this, to see how we've gone full circle, and maybe even put together a proclamation thanking me for bringing this to your attention, right? That might be a good idea, that I actually was able to get you, after three years, to codify this and put it on the front of the agenda, and unfortunately wasting paper, as Mr. DeLloso pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to circle back on one thing that was said earlier tonight and get a clarification. The actual Measure G, City Katati's sales tax voting, was 53.3% yes to 46.7% no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, information received after the agenda was posted. I think those copies were included. And with that, any other comments from anyone? Seeing none, we will call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.